So, welcome, everybody. It's great to see everyone. I wish we were sitting all together in that room up in the second floor of the BESC, working in our small groups at our tables and getting to really dive into this work. But I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. So this work session of the Board of Education for March 11th, 2021 is called The Order. This meeting is being livestreamed on PPS TV Services website, and thank you to our tech team, especially Terry, who always does such a great job of getting us out there for the public. Welcome. And we tonight are, we are going to have an opportunity to refamiliarize ourselves with the graduate portrait, to get an update on the strategic development and preview the budget for next year. So we're working together with the Community Budget Review Committee, also known as CBRC. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to get us started this evening?
Thank you, Chair Lowry, standing live in front of Roosevelt High, which I think is a nice symbol of our district's continued transformation. It's good to see everybody. Some new faces, both on the staff side and also with our Community Budget Review Committee. So I know Roseanne is going to do an opening introductions in just a moment. But what I will say just at the opening here is this is a great, big first opportunity to really get a bit of a download on where we are in our continued journey as a school system, both in how the community has dedicated and investing time, almost a year, in constructing a vision for our school system, for student success. And we know that a vision, unless there's a deliberate approach to making it true, you won't see the progress that you were initially excited about. So we understand certainly as an administration that you really need to have a concrete series of multi-year strategic plans to realize that vision. So you're going to hear a lot more details about how we started off in the interim with some clear priorities and the work that's been happening in the middle of everything to continue articulating a set of strategies that align with our district vision. So it's hard to dive into the conversation around a budget development process without being clear about where we're grounding those strategic investments. And you know, I think you've heard, you can tell an organization's values and priorities by where it dedicates its resources. So hopefully, we get clearer and more transparent about how that's the case for us and how we differentiate resources and manage those investments towards our vision can be clear for everyone. So we'll dive into some of those details here now and look forward to a very robust conversation. I don't expect it'll be the last one that we'll have on this. And a lot of the work that you'll be hearing about is definitely a work in progress. And it doesn't take away from understanding that there are a lot of concurrent strands of work happening, like focusing on reopening our schools, like understanding that there are still some other streams of resources that have come our way or continuing to come our way, and how those get integrated and debrading towards our overall goals. So even as we reopen, even as we contemplate the fall and what that might look like, we have to keep our eyes on the prize about where we want to be as a school system and what that means for our students in the long term. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Roseanne Powell.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I'm Roseanne Powell, I'm the Board Manager here at Portland Public Schools, and I want to thank you for the opportunity and thank you to the Board and the CBRC for devoting your evening to this work session. My role here is to help us get to know one another by guiding us through introductions and leading us through a few icebreaker activities. So I have a fun job tonight. Before we begin, I want to review some protocols for engaging in this work session. So the protocols you see here come from our professional learning on racial equity through partnership with the Center for Equity and Inclusion. We refer to that as CEI. And I'd like to review those now. We ask that you stay engaged, that you speak your truth responsibly, that you listen to understand and to believe, that you be willing to do things differently and experience discomfort, and expect and accept non-closure. So, next slide. To get us started, let's take a moment to go around the virtual room and introduce ourselves. Please state your name, what role you have in the community or within the organization, the number of times you have participated in a joint budget process with both the CBRC and the Board. And then tell us today, one thing you hope to learn. And I guess I'd like to kick it off with, we'll start with our Chair tonight, Chair Ailee Lowry.
All right. And Roseanne, are you going to invite the next person to speak after I speak, or should I invite someone?
Thank you for asking. Can you invite the next person?
Great. And so we'll just kind of have that. And I know it can be hard to keep track of who has gone and who hasn't. So after we get maybe halfway through, if you could just put up your hand like this so that folks can see, although I guess we can't, since we have the slides up, we'll figure this out as we go. Let's just do that. All right. My name is Ailee Lowry. My role, oh, I need the slide because I didn't memorize the questions. Sorry. It's like we can't have it both ways somehow. My role in the community is that I am the Chair of the School Board. And I, whoa, a number of times I've participated in the process. This is my second time through on the Board side of things, and I spent two years on the CBRC. So I did it twice through the CBRC side of things. And one thing I hope to learn today, ooh, that's a good one. I want to learn how how folks are seeing the hopefulness in this budget process. And I think that's always, numbers can be really dry sometimes. And one of the things I really love about this work is how we see how it's an agent of hope for our students. So that's what I'm hoping to learn today. And I will call on Sarah Kerr from the CBRC.
All right. Thanks, Director Lowry. Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Kerr. I have the privilege of co-chairing the CBRC for the second year. It's my fourth year participating in the budget process. I can't remember if we have these joint sessions all four years or not. I feel like that wasn't necessarily always true, but at the very least, four years participating. And I also am a parent of a second grader at Rose City Park Middle School or Elementary School. Geez, it's been a long year. She is not in middle school. She is a second grader. And I, one thing I hope to learn today, I am hoping, I know probably a preliminary conversation, but I am really eager to understand the reason which the thinking about budget authorities that are both immediate of students and teachers this year, and also sort of how you're thinking about sort of the do now, build toward as we think about the long-term recovery. I'm hoping to get a sort of clear picture of where we are with our early thinking. I will go to Director DePass. You're right underneath me on my screen.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle DePass. I'm a Board Member. I'm on the Board. This would be my second time as a Board Member participating in the CBRC budget process. What I think I'm looking to learn today is how, having not had experience with the budget process in the old times, several years ago, let's say, really interested in how we're applying our racial equity lens to this document and how we'll know we're looking at things differently compared to the way that the budget's been, you know, crafted in the past. I'm going to pass it to, how about Claire?
Hello, everyone. Claire Hertz, Deputy Superintendent at Business and Operations. And this is the third time I've been a part of the budget process with the Board and the CBRC at PPS. And one thing I hope to learn today is to really hear and listen to what our Community Budget Representatives have, are thinking and what they have to say about our strategic planning work and our initial budget work, and then also listening carefully to what our Board is giving us in feedback. So I'm really looking forward to hearing that. It helps us hone our work. And I'm going to tag the person that will be taking my place in the Board and CBRC budget process as of March 16th, not that I'm excited about that or anything, with Alberto Delgadoio.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Alberto Delgadoio, freshly minted CFO for Portland Public Schools. And first time participating. And one of the things I hope to learn today is, Chair Lowry, you touched on this, and Superintendent Guerrero, you touched on this as well, is just thinking about, numbers can be dry, but what's the narrative and story that we want to put together as we start thinking about the strategy and what the long-term implications are for that. So really thinking intertwined what everyone has to say to give me context and start thinking about how all of that, how all those pieces eventually need to come together. So really excited to be here. And with that, I will pass it on to Russell. I have Russell here. Mr. Russell Brown, Dr. Brown.
Hi, my name is Russell Brown. I'm the Chief of System Performance for Portland Public Schools. This is my second time in participating with the CBRC. And I too am really interested in hearing from the members of the community as well as our Board in terms of how they view our strategic planning work in the context of recovery and our plan forward. I think hope is incredibly important and really interested in, as Alberto pointed out, thinking about the narrative as we move forward and how we use metrics to help tell that narrative as we move forward. And with that, I would like to pass it on to Jennifer Samuels.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Samuels. I am a member of the CBRC. I've been a, also have been a PPS parent for 21 years, and I'm still doing it. This is my second year on CBRC, so the second time I've participated in this type of work. And I hope to learn today how CBRC can help and support the district in making sure that we best support and serve students going forward. I'm going to pass to Lisa Selman.
Thank you. So I'm Lisa Selman. I am, this is my first year on the CBRC, and I am a parent of a freshman at Lincoln High School. And so first time going through this budget process, but I have worked in both the federal and local government level, so I'm familiar with the process itself. And one thing I'd like to learn as a newer member is really what, how we can be most helpful to the Board and what feedback they really need to hone in on the budget as we move forward. I will pass it to Megan. I don't think we've heard from her yet.
Hi, I'm Megan Salvador. I'm a Project Manager for Business and Operations, and this is my first time being a part of this, and I'm just here to support. And I'm not sure who else is on. Wes, have you gone?
Yes. Hi, Megan. My name is Liz Larch. I'm the Contracted General Counsel for the District. I had to count on my fingers, which is probably not good for a budget process, to realize this is the fourth Board and CBRC budget process I've observed and been a part of. I think lots of variations on the same theme, but I'm very much looking forward to hearing the CBRC's fresh eyes and always smart and insightful questions. And we have been in such an intense time, that it'll be helpful to have your fresh eyes and perspective on some of the key strategic budgeting issues. With that, I'll hand it over to Scott Bailey.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Bailey. I'm Vice Chair of the School Board. My babies have long graduated from PPS. This is my fourth year on the Board, so my fourth budget process. I think it's the third year that we've, it was three years ago that we really deepened the participation of CBRC in this process. The one thing I'd like to walk away with is, and I'll say three talking points to say, here's how this coming year's budget is going to further our realization of our educational vision. And I will tag Director Constam.
Thank you. I'm Amy Constam. This is my sixth time doing this, although to Director Bailey and Sarah Kerr's point, we, in those early years on the Board for me, we did not have such a collaborative process with the CBRC, which certainly was our loss. So I'm looking forward to this discussion tonight because I feel like we're putting all the pieces together. In those prior budget conversations, we didn't have a strategic plan framework. We didn't have a vision. We didn't have a real, as much of a robust process with our CBRC. So I'm looking forward to building these things together with the CBRC and then also to really focus on using those tools. How do we use the budget process to address the really unusual and unprecedented demands that we know we're going to have to respond to having been out of school for a year? How about Jonathan Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer here at the District. I've been, this is my fourth budget process with the District. I'm excited to hear and engage in a meaningful conversation with all of you this evening. So good to be with all of you. How about Nicole? You were muted.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yep.
I feel like somebody always has to do it, so I'm glad I can take this on for everybody. I'm the Director of, Nicole Bassin. I'm the Director of Budget and Grant Counting. This is my first time in this role in a joint work session with the Board and the CBRC. I am hoping to learn today what is important to you all so that we can focus our resources in support of that and add clarity in our budget around those important pieces. So that's what I'm hoping to learn today. And let's see, let's go with Craig. Have you go, Craig.
I knew you were going to call me, Nicole. Good evening, members of the Board and members of the CBRC. I'm Craig Quayar. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Instruction and School Communities. This is my third budget process, so glad to be going through this process again. And one thing I hope to learn today is, again, I want to echo the sentiments from all of you and my colleagues, but I am really just interested in just hearing, you know, your feedback and really, you know, digging into the deep conversations and dialogue, you know, as our vision continues to take full form moving forward for what we do for children. So that's what really excites me. I'm going to go ahead and pick my buddy Parker.
Hey, I knew you were going to call on me. Thanks, Craig. I'm Parker Myras. I represent Benson on the CBRC, or on the DSC, I'm the Student Representative on the CBRC, and also the co-Vice Chair. I really would like to hear the Board's perspective and, you know, in that working more collaboratively, which I think is a goal of the Board as well. Well, I was planning on calling on you, Craig, but you called on me, so I got to find somebody else. Let's go with Director Andrew Scott.
Somehow I knew that was coming, Parker. Hi, I'm Andrew Scott. I use he/him pronouns. I am a Board Member for PPS. This will be my second time through a Board and CBRC budget process. And yeah, I think one thing I hope to learn today is how the budget is changing as a result of COVID and how we're refocusing some of our resources, but also, and just as importantly, how it's staying the same and things that we, even coming out of this, we want to keep a focus on and maintain some of that stability and continuity moving forward. So I'm excited to be here. And I'm going to glance through my list now to find folks. Kara, I want you to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Kara Bradshaw. I'm the Executive Assistant to the Board. This is my second joint meeting here. And I'm just really interested in general, hearing the process and the conversation that's going to take place around the budget between the two groups of people. And then I will, Jackson, have you gone?
May I suggest just a quick process idea? And that's for the people that haven't gone, there's a little at the bottom of your screen, there's a raised hand, and it'll pop up on your screen. And so those that, it'll save time in trying to figure out who has gone and who hasn't gone. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jackson. I'm the Deputy Student Rep to the District Student Council. I also represent Cleveland on the District Student Council, and I'm the Student Representative to the CBRC along with Parker. This is actually my first year, so I'm one of very few, I guess. So what I kind of want to learn is just general process, how we can work together, and also echoing what Director DePass mentioned about how we can see our R E S J policy or vision incorporated into the budgeting process. And hopefully, some, just learning more about performance measures, too, that could be incorporated into this process. And I'll call on Director Moore.
Sorry, I was not expecting that. So my name is Rita Moore. This is my fourth year on the Board. I am, this year I am the Liaison to the CBRC. I was also six years on CBRC as a member. This is, I believe, only the second time, though, in my memory, that the Board and the CBRC have met in a joint work session around budget. And I think that it's a positive step toward better collaboration, so I hope we continue to do this. What do I hope to learn? A budget is not only a moral document, but it should be a strategic document as well. So I'm eager to see how we're translating the emerging multi-year strategic plan into the budget building process. Oh, and who's left? Renee Anderson? Is she on? Okay, it looks like she may have disappeared. How about David Roy?
I see Renee. Okay. Do you see people's hands raised on your screen? Are you able to see that?
If you go to the participants list, Rita, if you click Participants, you can see the people with the blue hands raised on the participant list.
Okay. Okay, David? Sorry.
Thank you, Director Moore. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Roy. I'm the Senior Director of Communications for the District. I think this is my third time. I think I caught the end of a fourth one when I first came on and was doing some work for the District in the budget process here at the District. I am looking forward to, similarly to what some of my colleagues have said, just seeing what some of the reaction is to so much of the good work that's been going on to figure out both sort of budget and priorities over the next year, the next few years through that strategic plan lens. So very much eager to hear folks' reaction, questions, impressions of that. So I will now hand it off, speaking of colleagues, to my esteemed colleague, Leslie Adele.
Somehow I knew who was going to call on me. Hi, I'm Leslie Adele. I am the Senior Director of our Funded Programs Department. And this is my second year participating in some part of this process. And I'm, I feel like a little bit of a broken record, but I'm really looking forward to hearing really about what our Board and the CBRC want to learn more about regarding our strategic investments, especially as we're looking at the strategic plan, the emerging strategic plan. And so I'm really just listening to understand what you'd like to hear more of and what you'd learn, what you'd like to learn more of. And I will turn it over to Nathaniel.
Hello, I'm Nathaniel Shu. I'm Student Representative to the PPS Board of Education and a current senior at Jefferson High School. I have never really been involved in a Board or CBRC budget process before. So I'm just looking forward to learning more about what the role of the CBRC is in this process and how specifically that will work in such an unconventional year. So let's now go Roseanne.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Powell. I am the Board Manager here at Portland Public Schools. This is my seventh budget process, but as Director Moore stated, it's really only the second time that we've come together in a joint session that I can recall. And I, like everybody else, I think I'm echoing, would like to just hear how, really how people are seeing the budget through the lens of our strategic, emerging strategic plan and our strategic shifts that we've identified for the year. And next, I'm going to call on Director Brim Edwards.
Thanks, Roseanne. Good evening, everybody. I'm Julia Brim Edwards. I am a Board Member and also a community and parent activist. The number of times I've participated in the budget process, I think I'm on my second decade. So as a Board Member, this will be my eighth year through a budget process, but many years as a community member as well. But I will say, it's only been the last couple of years where there's been a more integrated process between the Board, CBRC, and District Staff. So I'm really looking forward to tonight, and the process, we're about ready to start. The one thing I hope to learn today is that we're in a, I think, a budget and year like none other for PPS, and it's 170-year history. And that I'm interested in learning from all of you about ways in which we can better support our students and our staff as we emerge from the pandemic and a really devastating year for our school community. And then also how the strategic plan can help guide us as we emerge from the pandemic and help us as we build a stronger, more resilient and just school district and how we can, that strategic plan can better support our students and help us fulfill the sort of hopes and dreams we have for each of our students and especially the students who we have not served well in the past. And I know that we want to serve better in the future. And I am going to call on Superintendent Guerrero.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Now I feel like I have to use a few more adjectives. Musician, student advocate, and instructional leader. This is my fourth opportunity in Portland in hopefully what the community is observing as a continually evolving attempt to create a budget development process and product that is increasingly transparent and aligned with priorities the community and the Board has identified. And I think maybe I've had eight And I think maybe I've had eight or 10 other annual budgets and processes in two other large urban districts. So I've had an opportunity to see this a number of different ways, but usually aiming towards the same goal. What I hope to, to learn and observe in this process is everyone hopefully beginning to gain a clearer understanding of, of how we are starting to outline strategies that we believe will, will build capacity in the organization and conditions in school to really accelerate outcomes for students. And Renee, were you able to get your microphone working? You want to try now?
Yes, and I'm sorry about that. When Michelle said, look for the something to raise your hand, I'm on my daughter's computer because I thought we were going to do Google Meet. And this is the only computer that lets me use Google Meet. And then we did Zoom, but my daughter's computer is different. So I couldn't find reactions, but I am here now. I am, I've worked, I started working for PPS in 1985. My children have also graduated from PPS. I am presently, this is my first time with CBRC, so this is the first time I've done this kind of thing. I am presently on the state board, the advisory board to O D E for BSS, BSS Student Success. I am a program manager for OCF's BSS Student Network. And we have 23 programs. And I am continually volunteering in the school district. So, well, in, in programs, so I'm a community volunteer. And I am hoping to hear how we're, we're going to use our funds to really work with, as a number of people have said, work with our students and teachers to recover from COVID. Because our, we've just stepped backwards as far as the gap growing. And it's a big concern with a lot of us. And so I'm glad to be here. And I don't see a hand. Let me see. I don't know who hasn't gone.
Here, I'll pick one. I'll pick Brad for you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brett Nelson, and this is my second year on the CBRC. I actually have not gone through the other budget process on the CBRC when there wasn't a pandemic going on. So I think I had some concerns with the, the process last year. Kind of how we were going to address things that were, I think, kind of, you know, pretty clear, pretty early on for, you know, what was going to happen to kids. And I think I really am looking forward tonight to hearing much more about how we're planning on remedying a lot of the, you know, basically it's a, for lack of a better term, it's a learning gap between kids. I think that there's a decent number of kids that have learned through the pandemic. And there are a decent number of kids that have not learned much to anything. And I think that is going to be one of the greatest challenges that the district and schools around the country are going to have. I wish, you know, I'd had a chance to participate in other processes, but like I said, this is only the, the second one. Things I'm looking forward to hearing tonight, I actually like numbers. I understand they can be dry, but I think we are safe and secure when we are looking at numbers and actually making data-driven decisions, the more numbers we can get. I'd like to, you know, call out Claire for sending the materials to us previous to the other meetings. That has been an incredible help rather than just coming into these meetings blind. That is a big, big help before these. I really want to see, you know, what we're doing to try and figure out how to, you know, how to fix that learning gap. Because it is, it is enormous and it's growing every day. So that's what I'm hoping to do. Thanks. I have to call on somebody else. Okay. Arena?
Okay, I'm Arena Phillips, and I had three kids going through PPS. We moved from Carvalis here in 2014. And my two older ones graduated already, and my younger one has graduated this year. I am serving on CBRC and this year I'm one of this co-chair vice chairs to help Sarah not to put all the burden on her shoulders. What I want to learn from this meeting is how we are going to deal with our asynchronous learning. Some people are saying like, we need to accelerate our students to kind of like, to see that our strategic plan still stands and works. And some people were saying that some people, some kids are behind and there is gap in learning. So that means in one class, we are going to have kids who didn't suffer much and kids who almost completely lost everything and it was a lost year for them. And they're going to be in the same classroom. So I'm curious how we are going to accommodate both for kind of like polls, the poll who didn't suffer much and the poll that's way behind and then the same grade. And I also am curious how the strategic plan that was in development in 2019 and early 2020 is going to be implemented through the budget now and through the future budget processes. That's my interest for today. Thank you. Do I need to call somebody or I'm the last one? Oh, there is Judah there. Judah, I'm calling on Judah.
All right, let's say there's also Roger, but I'll, I'll, I'll call on him afterwards. Yes, my name is Judah McCully. I am co-chair of CBRC. It's my fourth year on the CBRC. And let's see, and so therefore my fourth year in the budget cycle and the, as people mentioned, the changing process. I also regularly do budgets in the private sector, but this is my only experience in the public sector. And the biggest thing I hope to learn this evening is really getting a better sense of sort of the transition and continuity points between the current issues that are going on within, you know, transition to now mandatory in-person education deemed by the state for this year, transitioning into the budget for next year. And then how we're going to have both of those things aligned with the kind of longer-term strategic plan. Obviously in both in uncertain fiscal time, but more than anything else in a period where there is a lot of change going on for the families in the district and the kids themselves. So I'd like to see us highlight how we can take an integrated approach to wrapping up this school year, moving into the budget implementation for next year and setting ourselves up for success while also still aligning ourselves with the longer-term strategic plan. So Roger, I think you are last in line.
Good evening, and it's hard not to concur with most of, all the other speakers ahead of me. I have been on CBRC for over a decade. I'm a PPS graduate. My, both my daughters are PPS graduates. Both my parents taught in the system. I am a former state officer in the Oregon PTA and was, served for four years as the regional two director, which is responsible for all PTA chapters within PPS. So I have participated in numerous budget cycles. And so I'll just conclude with saying I'm anxious to receive an update as to what we can expect from state and federal funding, given the most recent passage in Congress just this week of a COVID relief bill that has education funding included and, and directives anticipated from Salem regarding reopening of schools. The governor's budget currently counts as being status quo, but fails to take in cost of living increases and so on. And so what is the fiscal impact of state and federal legislation that we can anticipate that will affect this budget cycle?
I think that's everyone now. Unless we had anyone who was solely calling in?
Thank you, everyone. I think next is Jonathan Garcia will take us to the next.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you, everybody. Again, good, good evening. I know that, you know, that took 45 minutes, but I think it was really important that we get to know a little bit about who's at the table. As we're going to be spending the rest of, between now and, and the end of the, the school year, getting to know each other a little bit more, working together to, through this budget development process. So today we're going to walk through a long, a big deck that, that we shared with you a few days ago. And so what I'm going to do is share a little bit about our vision, give you a summary of our vision and our vision process. Many of you were and participated in the process, but I'll walk you through, through that pretty quickly. And then I'll have Dr. Craig Quayar share with you a look back of year one of our strategic plan. And so, so he'll, he'll walk you through some, some of those numbers and some of the impact that we're beginning to see this year. And then I'll come back to, to, we'll take a break, then I'll, I'll come back and share where we are with the development of our 21 to 25 strategic plan. Dr. Brown will then join me to share a little bit of how we're thinking about monitoring and measuring progress towards the strategic plan. And then Claire will, in, in the evening, connecting all of this to the budget, a budget preview of this, for, for the 21, 22 school, school year. So you're ready to get started? Great. So I'm going to start with our vision. And, and I know that we also shared a 50-page document with you. I hope you had a chance to, to read through it, but I'm going to walk you through a, a, quite a bit of a story here of how we got to, to, to the vision. And so let's get started. So back in 2018, 19 school year, the school board, the board of education and the superintendent launched a visioning process. And the purpose of the visioning process was to, to really determine a north star for our organization. Where is it that we are heading to as, as, as a community, as a school community, and how do we get there? Right? And, and so we went on a journey across the community for a year. Now Roger participated in many of those events, meetings, many of the members of our board and members of the CBRC. And, and this vision really brought together the community, brought thousands of folks together. 16,000 data points were, were, were developed, were created in order to, 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 to to develop this vision. And our vision here is to prepare students to lead change and improve the world. And so when we think about our vision, you know, again, this is a 50-page document, but really our community, when, when our community thinks about our school district and when they think about our graduates, they want our graduates of Portland Public Schools to be compassionate, critical thinkers, able to collaborate, solve problems and prepare to lead a more socially just world. And so in our vision, if you, if you recall, there are four components to it. There is a graduate portrait which focuses on our student outcomes. What is it that they want? What, what will they know? What will they, what will they be? And what will they be able to do by the time they, they graduate from our system? So our community came together to develop a set of characteristics that we, we hope inspire in all of our students that, that leave our system, that graduate from our system. And we know that in order for our graduates to, to possess these characteristics, we need a set of, we have, we need adults that emulate that, 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 that showcased ways of being in order to promote and support each student in obtaining that graduate portrait. And we call that the educator essentials. And again, we have nine characteristics that as a community, that you as a community help define. And then we, we as a community also defined 11 system shifts. So we know if we want our students to graduate with these sets of characteristics and these, these sets of, of ways of being, to be well. And if we say that we, we hope these ways of being of our educators, it becomes true. Then what are we as a school system? What are the shifts that we have to make as an institution in order to help realize those? And so the community identified 11 of those system shifts that, that, that they, that the community has asked us as an educational leaders to, to prioritize, to focus on over the course, towards, as we reimagine PPS. And the last thing that's in our vision is a set of core values. These core values are a set of guides that really share, share who we're, who, who and what we're about. I think one of the, the things that, that makes me most proud of when I think about the vision is actually these set of core values. And I actually want to thank Director Bailey publicly because, you know, three years ago now, or two years ago, when we were in, in this journey, Dr. Director Bailey, you know, asked that, that we, we, we center a set of core values and that we define a set of core values. So, so those are, those are also in the vision. And so here's the, the our graduate portrait. This is what you as a community said, these are the characteristics that are important as our students graduate from our, our system. As a community, you wanted our students to, who are skilled, creative problem solvers and who collaborate effectively. You want students who demonstrate mastery of core academic knowledge and skills. You want students who are prepared to navigate through failure to success. As racial equity leaders, you want students to take part in making our society more just and equitable for people of color. As you want students who have positive feelings about their personal and cultural identities and a healthy sense of self-worth nurtured by allies to serve as role models and advocates. You want our students who are prepared to live and work in a global environment through multiple, multilingual and multicultural learning experiences that begin in early education. You want students that are, that graduate feeling optimistic about their life, about their futures, inspired by real-world experiences, aware of their career interests and earning practical credentials that have immediate value in the adult world. And you want students who are self-aware, who are reflective and are able to recognize personal bias towards people, cultures and situations. And so if that's, those are the characteristics that we want in our, that we as a community aspire for in our students. Then what does it look like for us as, as adults? Right? Whether you're in the classroom, whether you're on the board, whether you're the superintendent, whether you're on the cabinet, whether you're custodial staff. What does it look like to, to be an adult that is trustworthy, reliable and courageous? What does it look like to be an adult that is highly competent in areas of practice? We aspire as a community to be adults who are knowledgeable about our strengths and biases and have a positive sense of our own identity. We also want adults who are courageous change agents, who actively promote and ensure racial equity and social justice. And I can go on and on and share a little bit about the type of educators that you, that we as a community want in our, in our, in our schools. And I, and while I won't read every single aspect of these shifts, there are 11 shifts that as a community you have identified. You know, you, you want a school district that is connected and, and a transformative school district. You want a school district that aligns its systems and structures through a racial equity lens. You want a community, a school district that has a culture of physical and emotional safety. And so the list goes on here. We as, we as a community want a lot of shifts. We need to make shifts as an institution in order to realize these. We need to make shifts as an institution in order to realize these elements of the graduate portrait and educator essentials. And so it's going to take some time to disrupt and to unpack these levels, these shifts, these systems that exist. I'm going to sit just for 30 seconds or for maybe 15 seconds. I want to sit with these core values. As we're going through this budget process through the, you know, between now and June, let's think about how these core values show up and who we are and how we show up. How do we make sure that students are at the center? That we believe that the belief in the fundamental right to human dignity and generating an equitable world is valued? And the list can go, how do we make sure that we're grounded in the spirit of Portland? And so we're going to, what we're going to do here for the next 15 minutes, and I know Megan Salvador sent you a summary, a one pager of this educational system shifts. And so what we're going to do is split you up into three groups, three small breakout groups. I believe these breakout groups and Roseanne, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, are going to be accessible to the public in real time. Is that correct?
Yes. The links are accessible for anyone to go into various breakout groups.
Perfect. And so we're going to break you up here for the next 15 minutes. And what we would love, there are going to be three facilitators, Claire, Craig and Roseanne. And when you split up, we would love for you to have a conversation in two parts. Part A is, as you think about these five system shifts here, can you imagine what this would look like if we've successfully attained them? If we actually made these shifts? So I would love for you to focus on the first five and then towards the end, maybe the last five minutes, add the second set of shifts. Just have a conversation as a group. What would this look like if we've successfully attained these elements? If we've successfully shifted, made these shifts? So Megan, can we split, or I don't know who's going to do that?
I think Kara is on point for the breakout session.
Got it.
She will take you all away.
Can we leave the screen up on, for the breakout sessions?
I'll leave this on. I don't know if it's going to carry over to the...
It will not.
It will not.
But everyone should have it via email.
It looks like all of my assignments are now unassigned, so I'm going to manually send people over. Megan, if you can, I don't know if you can help me with that?
Kara, can you reassign me as host?
All right. So as they're doing that, that's going to take a little bit of time. I'm going to keep us, keep us going and share a little bit about our board goals. And so you just heard a little bit about our vision. Again, as a recap, this vision was created by our community, by you. And this, this, this vision really serves as our North Star, right? A destination. So as a community, we know where we want to go. We know what we're aspiring to. And so now as an elected board, our board has defined a set of goals that we're going to be held publicly accountable for. And in here, you can see a third grade reading goal, a fifth grade mathematics school. And I want to commend the board because they were bold in really naming that our students of color and increasing academic success for our students of color is a big priority. And you can see in eighth grade, we have an eighth grade graduate portrait goal that by the spring of 2022, Portland Public Schools eighth graders, students will move from 44% meeting proficiency in both English Language Arts and Mathematics to 51% meeting proficiency in both subjects as measured by S-Back. And then we also have a post-secondary readiness and ready to college, ready for college and career goal.
Jonathan?
Yes.
So one thing on this, the eighth grade goal, we actually had a more expansive goal that was yet to be developed and I don't want to lose track of that, that we're just looking at meeting proficiency, but it was a richer goal. So I just like, I want to just make sure we keep that asterisk on that eighth grade goal because we still have to outline that.
Absolutely. And I noticed that as I was reading the title and it said graduate portrait, but yet the subject in here was very, very specific. So I think that, yeah, there is a conversation still ongoing. Superintendent, did you want to?
No, I think Director Brad Edwards is right in reminding us that what we want is a backwards mapping of the continuum at eighth grade and what we talked about is more of a capstone or an authentic assessment. And so we have not forgotten this because in all of our middle school redesign conversations, in fact, we're talking about if we have a successful middle grades experience with our students, what are the dispositions, what are the, what are the different ways to identify indicators for students' growth along a lot of different areas, not just academic? So we have not forgotten that and you should begin to see emerging what that looks like.
Great. Because as someone who didn't, wasn't brilliant in either math or English, we know that our students are brilliant in many areas and trying to capture that so that they launch into high school feeling competent and accomplished in more than just the standardized measures.
Absolutely. So I'm actually going to, so we're not going to break up into a breakout room. I think we're having some technical difficulties here. So what we're going to do is actually do this for 10 minutes, just till 7:30, have a quick conversation here. And I would love to invite our CBRC members and our board members to share a little bit about what, when they think about these elements of the shifts, when we think about being a connected and transformative school district, again, there's a little bit more details in each of those elements. What do you, what would it look like when we've successfully attained that element?
Well, for, want me to jump in and get the ball rolling? So when I look at, and actually the third one is kind of a two-parter. So diverse workforce. That means we'd have, you know, the pipeline in place that encourages more diversity in terms of our students looking at different careers and hopefully education-related careers. That means we'd have our partner, community colleges and universities supporting students as they moved along, getting the educational background they needed in those careers. That means we'd have a hiring process that supported increasing diversity. We would have supportive structures in place because we know right now, for example, when we hear from teachers of color, that all too often they feel isolated, they feel like they're the only ones who bring up equity issues in a staff meeting. So, and we'd end up with a workforce that at least reflects the diversity of our adult population, if not tilted a bit more so because we know our student population is more diverse than our adult population, we'd be approaching that.
Absolutely. Judah?
Yeah. First off, I just wanted to suggest folks in large groups, definitely utilize the raise hand function out there. It helps a lot. But I was going to go ahead and chime in and call out the last of these because it's an area of active discussion right now amongst the community strongly, the culture of physical and emotional safety, where I see the broader, the PPS community right now having a very, at times contentious discussion of what physical and emotional safety looks like during the pandemic and the transition to, to in-person learning and the various continuums in there. And so I would say that, you know, one sure sign of that would be to, are we getting to a place where as a community, we are not routinely having conversations of that sort? Where the decision to send kids to school, the decision to go in to teach feels, it's not even a question, but one feels completely ready and capable of sending color, sending students regardless of the color of their skin or their sexual orientation or their medical needs into school and feeling supportive and safe and capable and that parents and educators are not worrying about the circumstances as they get there.
And, or Director Scott, sorry?
Sorry, Jonathan. I go by my first name too. Um, you know, I think when I look at the second one, racial equity aligned systems and structures and sort of envision what that'll look like, I mean, you touched on our board goals, right? And so, you know, making progress and achieving those board goals is, you know, is a key. But when I'm reading through the description of the system shift, I think this one's particularly relevant here, you know, it's aligning systems and structures, including equitable budgeting to ensure that supports are tailored to individual schools and ultimately to students. And then that's supported through accountability practices. And I think, you know, in this context, right, thinking about what that looks like if we achieve it, it is, it's equitable budgeting, right? Which is not equal budgeting by any means, right? It's using equity to guide where we invest our resources. And I think the district has made progress in that, in that regard. And I think there, there's more we can do. And I would say, actually, there's progress we've made, but we can be more transparent about that because I think a lot of the community doesn't understand how the district has shifted resources using our racial equity and social justice lens to schools that, that need it.
How about Brad?
Yeah, I think as I'm going through this, I think, kind of echoing the part that I mentioned earlier, when I was looking through these educational, you know, system shifts, there, a lot of this doesn't seem to be based on data. It's more things that are harder to quantify. And I think, I understand, you know, that there's not data that's driving the other core values, but I think some of the educational system shifts needs to have a, and I understand that, you know, this came from the other community, but I think it's hard when, you know, people are arguing against numbers and I think, I think we can almost lose sight of that sometimes. I think when it comes to these, all these goals that we've got, you know, these, these goals, and I mentioned this last year, the third grade, the fifth grade, eighth grade and post-secondary, I don't know how you're going to measure those. I think that every, every time that anything gets measured, people are going to say COVID, COVID, COVID. I don't know where, how we're going to keep, I'm a little concerned that those goals remain some of the main things that we're going to base, base things on, primarily because I think that we're setting ourselves up, you know, basically for a system that, you know, ignored, you know, that there was a pandemic. I mean, it's, we just need to get, we need to figure out a way to address as many kids as soon as possible in the schools. And I think if we focus on, you know, so far in this, this presentation, the word COVID or pandemic hasn't even been, been a part of the discussion. Things are just different right now and I think we need to recognize that. And we just need, you know, people in the classroom that are able to deal with this. I think there is just going to be an enormous learning gap and I think the sooner that we can start to address that, the better.
Director Constance?
Thank you. I'm looking at a culture of physical and emotional safety and it really takes me straight back to the educator essentials because to me what that's about is making sure that every single child has an adult in the building that they can connect with and that they, they feel gets them. And when you look at just the incredible diversity of our students, that's, that's really challenging work. And I think the, the degree to which we have been so specific about those necessary characteristics for the adults is what is, what creates the conditions for a culture of physical and emotional safety for every child.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that. Sarah?
Yeah, so I'm not sure exactly which one this is. Can you all hear me? I have an unstable internet connection. And so I don't know that it's perfectly aligned to any of these specifically, it may be a little bit cross-cutting, but maybe best aligned to the racial equity aligned systems and structures. I've been thinking a lot about, we talk a lot about sort of learning gaps or gaps and outcomes, and I've been thinking a lot about sort of gaps in access to opportunity. And so for me, I think really looking to some of those opportunity gaps as measures of whether or not we're successful, you know, again, in a cross-cutting way. So I think that means sort of ruthlessly applying a racial equity lens to decisions we're making about resource allocation in this COVID moment. I think it means things like, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, right? Who had access to devices and wifi versus who didn't? That dictated sort of who had access and the opportunity to learn. It's things like, you know, access to mental health supports, a caring adult and academic supports. If we're launching, you know, high dosage tutoring programs is one example that is getting a lot of airtime right now. How are we making sure that access to those kinds of opportunities is prioritized for students who have been held furthest from them historically in this moment? And I think we will know if we're successful, when we can say that those opportunity gaps are narrowing, if not closing.
Director Lowery?
I'm really looking at that transformative curriculum and pedagogy. And I think, you know, the, we've been talking a lot about the science of reading and the sort of new learnings in the last, well, more wide stream accepted learnings in the last few years about how reading is taught and how children learn reading and thinking about, you know, how we continue to transform our curriculum. So to be in a place where all teachers understood those sort of new findings about how to really help craft successful readers. And I think the transformative curriculum for me would also be highly focused on math. I think, I don't know if it was Karina or someone else said in a meeting, like, we always talk about everyone can learn to read, but everyone can also do math. And this, you still have this cultural sense that math is hard and, and numbers are boring. I mean, I said numbers are dull at the beginning of this, Brad, but that sort of transformational curriculum, it, it not only is excellent and high standard curriculum, but it sort of transforms culturally our own senses around the content. And I think, you know, we've, the school board have gotten to express, experience, sorry, at several of our learning sessions, the, some of the curriculum like that, we did a session with Nicole Berg on the climate justice curriculum and we did a session with our, the Native American curriculum and just how amazing those are. And we looked at poems written by Native women in the curriculum for the climate justice that talked about their different, very different experiences in two different parts of the world of climate change and did a bunch of different activities that really, really were transformative. So I'm, I'm seeing a school district where that is the, that is the norm, that we have this really in-depth, amazing, almost life-changing curriculum that students are participating in, that's exciting them about their place in the world, what they know, what they can do, what they can be. And I think that's, that's where we're headed with that transformative curriculum and pedagogy system shift.
Absolutely. Director DePass, you have the last word before we move on.
Thank you. I'm really looking forward to the cultivating system-wide learning in a diverse workforce. I read a letter today from someone in our system that was talking about the absence, I'm sorry, it was a, an article I read in the Colorado School District about the importance of, for students, especially Latinx, Indigenous and African-American students, to have someone that in the classroom that believes in them and loves them and loves their parents and their parents' experiences and how just the presence of those teachers can improve outcomes for those students. But I'm also really interested in the, in the system-wide learning. It's, what I studied in my graduate program was like this institutional learning and learning, learning in teams and that learning... And, um, that learning, um, and I, and I see evidence of that happening now, um, but I'd like to like institutionalize and kind of codify that value, um, that, that we do this without, within the, like throughout the entire organization, we learn as a team and as teams and as a system. Um, it's how things work in nature. Um, it's going to produce outcomes that, that are, that are going to benefit all children. And it'll actually, as lifelong learners, it'll be, you know, give us all something to do too. There's, um, you just, one of my mentors is a, is a PhD neuro- neuroscientist and, um, she said, you know, we used to think people stopped learning, um, that they could not learn past thirty-five. And what we know now is that the brain is plastic. It's, uh, there's a lot of elasticity that we can continue to learn until the day we die. And so as a system, as an institution, I, that's what I'm the most excited about. Is that, that, that love of learning and that modeling that for our students and that, um, believing in our own ability to grow, not just as individuals, but as, as a, as a organization.
Absolutely. Uh, Director Bryn Medwards, I see your hand up.
You know, if you want to move on, um, Jonathan, please go ahead. I can contribute it to the point.
Great. Uh, and I think I say Renee that wanted to speak.
I, I was at a work session, oh, it could have been a year or two years ago. And there was a woman who was visiting. She was a, um, a consultant for the district. And she said, we have the best racial equity policy ever. And my concern is, it's a piece of paper, it's a, a document that nobody reads. And it may be the best piece of paper ever, but if we don't truly act it, read it and act it out and truly do it, it means nothing. It's a piece of, it's words on a document. And so as I look at some of these things, I get very concerned because we're reading this wonderful document. Yet when I talk to students and parents and teachers in the schools, we still today have teachers who are saying, um, no one listens to me. I, I have ideas on how to make my students feel more comfortable and the, and the, and I have people telling me that's not my job to, you know, just teach my class. So, um, what would, what would it look like? It would, we would have teachers of color who, um, who have a voice, who are treated equally in their schools. And we don't put one in a school, uh, which is why my child did not go to our district school because they want to put my daughter in a class by herself. They were, and spread them out so that white kids could have a diverse uh, classroom. And I said, not, not for my daughter. She's going to be with kids that look like her. So, um, I, I'm just really concerned that we keep looking at the document and we're not looking at what is happening from day to day. And I want us to look at the screen. It's not going to look like this. The screen that we have right now is not going to look like this if this document is true. And I'm, I guess I'm, you know, I've been here since nineteen eighty-five and when I came here, we did have diversity. We had no gaps. The gap was about gone when Dr. Prophet was here. And I don't know if anybody's out there who's been, was here when Dr. Prophet was here. But I, I guess I'm just tired. I'm tired of reading this. And then going to the schools and seeing my students and, and fellow educators who are so disillusioned and you have educators who have left this district for that very reason. So I want it to be more than words. I want it to be more than words. I have seen the school board not act like that document at meetings. So anyway, I, it's, it's very difficult for me sometimes. I'm just saying.
Ms. Anderson, I, I hear you and I see you. I hear you. I mean, I, and I, I know, I know your work. I know your history in this community and I absolutely agree with you. I mean, I think, you know, how do we, I think what's, what's interesting about this vision for me is that it was created by our community, but it is our responsibility to implement it. If you're right, because you're right. If, if not, this is just a, a, a nice, pretty piece of paper with a lot of pretty words. But I can tell you, as a son of undocumented immigrants, as a child of poverty, of incarcerated parents, of dealing with all the racism that is, I've experienced, I know that I work with so many people in the central office and with a board that is committed. Do we make mistakes? Yes, but we're all committed to this theory of action that you see on your screen. If we bring racial equity and social justice strategies into our work, right? And, and it's not just BS. It's not just the word racial equity and social justice strategies. What do we mean by that? Right? We're, when we say here at the district, when we say racial equity and social justice strategies, we're talking about how do we in, in, in do more culturally specific family engagement? How do we do more wraparound services? Because we know that that's what our students need, especially our black, our native, our students of color. How do we make sure that we're supporting mentoring and leadership development, not only for our students, not only for our students, but for adults to your point. How do we make sure that our, 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 our leaders of color, our educators of color are mentored, right? And, and Dr. Mateer, who's not here tonight, you know, the work that she's doing to, to create a mentoring program for black leaders, for leaders of color in the system, right? How do we make sure that we're providing more extended learning opportunities, uh, for, for our students, right? How do we ensure that, that we're partnering with culturally specific partners? And then the last strategy, when we think about racial equity and social justice strategies, we talk about having a positive and cultural identity development and student advocacy. That's really center. As a former youth organizer, that's, that's, I, elevating the voices of our students, but particularly our black, native and students of color is so integral to our work. And I can tell you that each and every day, our team wakes up committed to that. Not only because we're committed to it, but because this is our lived experiences. This is the superintendent's lived experiences. This is Shanice's lived experience. And we have so many people on our team that are committed to this because it's a way of life, right? And, and, and you're right, we have to transform this vision, this, this document into reality. And, and that's what we're all here to do. Director DePass?
Uh, thanks. I wanted to, um, first, um, Jonathan, appreciate you sharing, you know, your personal story. That's really, that's very meaningful and and it, it, it does make a difference to have people with lived experience of doing this work. And also, um, Ms. Anderson, I wanted to, um, respond to your comment and that's, the, the slide has changed, but the idea is we can have, you know, these targets of like having a diverse workforce, but I think we need to be very specific about that. And we also need to know, we need to create environments where, where we can retain a diverse workforce because we can hire people all day long. Um, we can hire teachers and administrators of color and, and there needs to be more. And I didn't answer the question correctly. And I think this is a, this is a really, um, why we need arts training is because you need to develop a vision, a picture. And that question around cultivating a diverse workforce, that picture is you walk into a school and you see not just one teacher, not just a Filipino teacher, you know, the Latinx teacher in this building and one black. That the teaching staff and the administration, the people making decisions reflect the kids that we're serving.
Absolutely.
Those, you know, those, I don't know, almost forty percent of kids and people in, in PPS that are kids of color. And that, that's okay. And we're okay celebrating this multiculturalism. We're okay, like, you know, addressing anti-blackness. And, and we're, we, goes along with this continuous learning. Is it, it's wonderful to learn from people that aren't like you. That's how, that's how humans have survived is by learning from others that aren't like them. And so can we do that to build resilience into our system? Can we retain, you know, this rainbow of, you know, when I envision this vision, it's, it's colorful. And it's beautiful. And we've got, you know, the, the globe is represented and, and because we've done that work, we're resilient as a system.
Absolutely. I, when I, when I see, when I see that, when I read this vision, I see this vision, I see kids that look like you, that look like me, that look like Renee, that look like Guadalupe, but it also look like Jennifer and look like Leslie and also look like Ailey. Right? It's all of us. And I think that's what we're committed to. And Director Bailey, even, and especially how Director Bailey dances. So, you know, what we did, um, you know, and I skipped this slide really quick, but just to give you a little bit of context. So eighteen nineteen is when we did our vision. Nineteen twenty, this last school year, we developed, uh, our board developed its goals. We developed our theory of action. We prioritize, again, we have eleven shifts. We prioritize five for the first year and we created a set of one-year objectives. And so again, shared with you the board goals, our theory of action. And these were the five shifts that we prioritized in the last school year. A connected and transformative school district, racial equity-aligned systems and structures, cultivating a system-wide learning and a diverse workforce, transformative curriculum and pedagogy and a cultural and physical emotional safety. And these, this is what was started, this is what started our first, our, uh, a year one of our strategic plan. And again, when you think about our vision, our vision is our road, is our destination and our strategic plan is our roadmap. It is the first set of a, of a map, of a step-by-step guide towards, uh, realizing that vision. And so in this, you will see that, uh, some of the strategies were focused on, uh, creating a systems and structures, uh, and alignment. Uh, this, there, there's elements in here around accountability and transparency. Similar to the racial, uh, to, in, in our racial equity-aligned systems and structures, really making sure that we had, uh, racial equity and social justice aligned and integrated across our system. And, and it's a, a work of progress. And the second strategy really committed to professional development. We know that racial equity and social justice is both about the institution and shifting the way in which institutions uh, do business, but it's also in the individual and making sure that the individual understands it's, it's one's privilege and understands how one works within, uh, uh, racial dynamics. And so strategy two really was important, uh, as we developed our PD. And then, uh, culture, uh, strategy, uh, we also focused on cultivating a system-wide learning and diverse workforce, really focusing on PD off, uh, creating PD offerings, uh, uh, in alignment with our educator essentials and beginning to create the, the continuum. And then, uh, similar and, and I think it was Director DePass that was sharing about, um, our climate justice work, um, in year one of our strategic plan, we've been focused on transforming, uh, having a transformative curriculum and pedag- pedagogy, which includes expanding, you know, um, a, a variety of things, implementing climate justice curriculum, advancing, introducing ethnic studies and tribal history courses, integrating, uh, CT into our core academic curriculum, uh, and the list goes on. And the last shift that we focused on, uh, or, sorry, in, uh, in, uh, around culture and the physical and emotional safety, uh, our team really was focused on completing MTSS training for, uh, for schools, forty schools, continuing the implementation of social emotional learning, uh, and continuing to survey students and families on what sense of belonging, safety and engagement through the successful school survey looks like. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quayar, who's going to give you a little bit more depth about what we've accomplished in the last year as it, as it relates to some of these, uh, investments that, that, that we've made, uh, as an organization. Dr. Quayar?
Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. And, um, hello again, board and members of the CBRC. It's great to be here with you. Um, in this next section, we're going to guide you through how we invested in the year one strategic plan, uh, using the newly legislated student investment account funding that you'll see and how investments were guided by engagement and data, uh, were profoundly impacted by COVID nineteen. And then how we were able to use, um, uh, we were, what was that? Okay. I thought someone was, um, saying something. I mean, then how we were able to use the strategic, the strategic plan to prioritize our investments, especially in a critical time where we continue to make progress in key areas. Next slide, please. Uh, we conducted a comprehensive community engagement process, um, that really elevated improvements and investments needed in of three critical core areas, racial equity and social justice, um, closing the achievement and opportunity gaps for our historically underserved students, um, and, um, an area around social, emotional and mental health supports. As you recall, our original allocation, um, was reduced from the initial thirty-nine million to twelve point four million. Uh, we did go back to our community commitment and our needs analysis and we did identify that our critical priorities that's, that needed to be maintained. Um, for that, we were able to reallocate nine point eight million dollars from our general fund to offset the loss of SIA funds. So again, really quick on this slide, you know, we do know as we went through the, the pandemic, we did suffer from an economic shortfall. And the initial SIA allocation was impacted. Um, but again, the district was able to, um, commit from our general fund to ensure that some, that our core priorities around the three investment areas that we just discussed were still able to launch to provide critical support to schools. Strategic investments were made across each of the system shifts. Uh, we just heard, um, Mr. Garcia go through, um, each of the critical shift areas and the strategies that accompanied them. Um, and this slide shows the critical investments, um, based off of our original SIA or revised, our revised SIA and then our revised general fund across each of the shifts. A connected and transformative school district, racial equity-aligned system, structures and culture, a transformative curriculum and pedagogy, and a culture of physical and emotional safety. And here you can see the investments, um, by strategy with the reduced amount of SIA funding. The strategies were reviewed in the previous section for reference that Mr. Garcia went through, um, in the previous slides. And again, this is showing the same, um, uh, comparative figures in terms of the original SIA allocation in gray, um, the revised SIA and then the revised general fund in blue. And this is a very important slide, just as all the others are, but we just, we just heard a lot of robust um, conversation around the importance of cultivating a system-wide learning and a diverse workforce, um, which is system shift C. Uh, this isn't highlighted on the previous investment slides because we use the SIA administrative indirect fees um, intended to cover overhead costs. So we targeted the administrative, uh, indirect fees for recruiting, hiring and supporting, um, our efforts in cultivating a diverse workforce. Uh, the SIA hiring and priorities provided an opportunity for us to shift practices and accelerate our recruitment of educators of color. As research is very clear, that our BIPOC students have better academic outcomes when they have a diverse teaching staff and workforce at the time. So seven categories emerged from the needs assessment and our, and through our community engagement process. With the three that are highlighted that emerged as our highest priority investment areas. Increased academic supports and targeted interventions for our most vulnerable and historically underserved students. Increased social, emotional, mental and behavioral health supports across the district and culturally specific student and family supports and expanded community partnerships. After the SIA reductions, we continued to prioritize our SIA funds for social, emotional and mental health and academic supports, especially for historically underserved students. And our general fund was prioritized for our racial equity and social justice partnership contracts, which are directly focused on providing culturally specific academic and social, emotional, mental health supports. This slide illustrates how the investment categories support the system shifts and our strategies. In the next slides, we will share some highlights of how these investments are progressing throughout the district. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that the strategies in detail were shared on the previous slides that Mr. Garcia shared. So you'll see the impact of our investments are still emerging. Details on the progress to date are included in your packet. Uh, we are closely monitoring progress, which at this point is focused on implementing the plan with increased support for students. We would like to highlight that we have increased the personnel and programming specifically for our black, indigenous and Latinx students. Hiring, onboarding and planning are currently on track. Additional efforts underway to monitor the progress such as we're facilitating racially and culturally affirming focus groups in multiple languages. It captures a clear picture of the experiences of our families and the impact of this pandemic. The successful school survey is underway, which measures school culture and student well-being. And we continue to have ongoing tracking of qualitative and quantitative sources that will be available this spring, and we'll hear a little bit about that later in the presentation.
Dr. Quayar?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could ask a question, um, uh, thank you for this summary. A question, almost all of this is phrased in the sort of additional funds from the Student Success Act, but the vast majority of our budget is in the rest of our budget. And I'm interested in how the district is thinking about, um, how we utilize the vast majority of our budget to get after our priorities versus just the incremental add that came with the Student Success, Success Act. Um, because the, the real money and the resources is in the base budget, not just the added, um, SSA money, which I think we've done, um, the district has done a really good job at the, targeting the SSA money. But what about the, all the other resources we have, um, and in service too? And thinking about how we shift those to focus, um, on our priorities and what we want to achieve as, as a district?
Thank you, Director Bren Edwards. I think it's a really good question, and you're right. Um, SSA was really, really targeted, uh, specifically around those core priority areas. And it was important, um, for us to discuss where, where we were at with year one progress. Um, later in the presentation, um, we, we will hear, um, from Ms. Hertz, uh, specifically around, um, a lot of the different funding streams in terms of what we are looking specifically in terms of investments. And you're right, um, I, I, I have heard throughout the dialogue of the course of this presentation around, you know, um, what, uh, how are the investments going to go directly into learning acceleration? Um, in terms, you know, of, of how we are bolstering our wraparound supports and our resources and our academic interventions, um, and, and, um, uh, for students? And, and, and what does the whole look like? And, and, and I, then we're going to have a place for that, Director Bren Edwards. Um, it's just not right now for, for this specific slide, since we're just reporting on, on year one's progress. Is that, is that, is that okay?
It's fine.
So on this slide, um, with additional staffing and programs for academic supports and targeted interventions, um, we do know that we have, um, made a significant investment in how we've been supporting our CSI and our TSI schools. Uh, we have enhanced small group instruction for acceleration, uh, outreach for disengaged students, and supporting teachers in our ongoing planning. Um, so for example, I'm going to put ourselves, you know, um, um, in the eyes of a student at, at a particular CSI school. So for a student at a CSI school who may be struggling in reading, you know, if I'm that student, I can depend on a full-time instructional specialist to work with me in a, in small group to support accelerating, you know, my reading and literacy skills. And, and that's one of the additional, um, supports that we have provided to our CSI schools, um, in terms of adding additional, um, um, instructional specialists and capital to help support our students, um, in, in mathematics and literacy. Uh, we've also made substantial expansions in our social, emotional, and mental health supports. Um, a lot, some highlights that include, um, an increase in counselors and social workers and school psychologists, um, contracted services to provide culturally-responsive mental health services, uh, the, the developing of an SEL implementation plan that reflects the PPS vision, um, which is focusing on students and reducing the harm, um, that our Black, Indigenous, and Latinx students experience. Um, the increased community-centered outreach to our Latinx families through our family engagement specialist team, restorative justice specialists, supporting schools with community circles, culturally-responsive classrooms, and restorative practices. And I just wanted to add that the addition, just taking off from focusing in on the first bullet, you know, the addition of our counselors and social workers and school psychologists have really increased the capacity for how we're supporting our students. You know, they have been navigating the pandemic, mental health, social isolation, trauma, and a, and a myriad of other things, um, that our students could be facing. And, um, that has been a really significant investment, um, that has truly been a, a full wraparound, um, support to our students. For culturally-specific student and family supports and expanded community partnerships, racial equity and social justice partnerships have been providing supports in five evidence-based areas. And culturally-specific family engagement, wraparound services, leadership development, extended day, and positive cultural identity. Racially-diverse staff at partner organizations who are significantly more reflective of the student population are our providers. Our racial equity and social justice partnerships are helping build and improve our RESJ system supports as, as, uh, putting our eyes and reflecting as a student, as a BIPOC student. If I was, if I'm a BIPOC student, I'd be invited to participate in a leadership development program provided by one of our RESJ partners, you know, through my high school, which is an example of a, a myriad of opportunities that our culturally-specific, um, partners and organizations provide for our students, um, throughout a number of our schools. And finally, I, I'd like to highlight several more key investment categories. Um, we've added more resources and professional development for ethnic studies, multilingual literacy and math redesign. We've expanded elective opportunities at twenty middle school and K-eight campuses. We've added supports for middle school arts expansions in the Jefferson and Roosevelt feeder schools. We've added programming and supports for native students, including after-school programs. Uh, we've added a seventh period at four of our middle schools, um, which is still a pilot that's underway. And we've added FTE to reduce K-five class sizes, um, in a variety of different schools. And, and again, we have provided a more detailed summary of our progress, um, that is, um, currently in your packet. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Quayar. Um, and as we go into a five-minute break, since we've been together for about two hours, uh, you know, I, I keep reflecting on the questions around how, uh, how we've invested this year, um, on COVID. And, and one of the thing, and, and, and supporting our students, uh, during this pandemic. Earlier today, we sent out a message to, uh, staff, um, and we highlighted that, uh, this year we increased from eleven, uh, social workers to forty-two. From eleven to forty-two, um, and those forty-two folks, um, have been working really hard to get in front of students. Um, they've met with thousands of kids. Uh, I've seen some of the reports that are, that are coming out, uh, literally meeting with kids, uh, thousands of kids, um, and developing curriculum, uh, and, and ways of being, uh, across our schools to, to support our kids, uh, at a time. So because of these investments, we were able to, again, increase from eleven to forty-two. So it kind of gives you an example, uh, of the type of investments that are, that are happening. Uh, love to take, uh, I see, Judah, your hand is up, uh, so I want to honor that. But then love to take a five-minute break, have folks stretch, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I actually have to head out here in just a moment, unfortunately. Um, but I wanted to hopefully make sure that we took some time to sort of center these, um, great words once again and, uh, fantastic, I, I think, intentions in what we're actually doing. Because, you know, I'm thinking to myself the, about the support for, you know, especially educators of color and, uh, students and such. And yet I'm seeing from the educators of color, I know, like, every single one of them is going around sharing the, uh, you know, poster for the rally for students and staff that's going to be happening on Saturday, uh, where it very prominently says, and these are their words specifically, "We are unsupported and unsafe" in all capital letters. And so I want to call out, I feel we would be completely remiss if we didn't highlight the complete and total mismatch between what we're hearing from not just a small number, but a large number of our educators of color in the district, um, and regarding their plans that are actually happening now. So these ideas about the future are great, but how are we going to, as these leaders, break that down so that they're reflected in our actions right now? And I don't see any of that being addressed here, and that disappoints me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, uh, Judah, I'd love to, you know, I welcome you to, to, you know, right now we're, we're opening schools, but, uh, after things settle, I'd love to sit down with you and share all the ways in which I think we're living into this vision, both in, uh, in, in real time, um, as an organization. We're not, we're not perfect, I think, but we're, we're definitely striving towards this, this vision. Uh, and it's, uh, you know, someone said earlier, it's a big Titanic. And so this, this, this vision was just created, uh, by our community. And so in order to get there, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have to build, build the systems and the structures and the culture to live into that.
And like I said, I absolutely believe they're not only great words, but I honestly believe in the good intention of everyone here. Otherwise, I would not, uh, be here, you know, with this time, and I don't think that you would either. So like, I absolutely honor the intention, but, you know, as already been expressed, we also have to match that with what we currently see really on the ground and say, how are we addressing those needs now? In that, you know, when I started with, what do I want to see out of this? It's that continuity of how are we taking these great visions? And how are we getting from there to here? Because right now, I'm seeing a rally by people I really care about who are saying that none of these values are being met right now. And that is, that is painful to see, because I want us to reflect that.
Absolutely. So let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Let's come back at eight, ten, uh, so go ahead and stretch, and.
I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, uh, to introduce this section before, uh, I would quickly want, uh, I really want to quickly get through these two next sections, because I know ultimately, we wanted to provide all of this as context as, uh, as we turn it over to Claire and Nicole and the team around the budget preview. So, but superintendent, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, um, thank you. Good evening again. Um, thi- this next section, you know, and, and I do want us to go through it quickly. I, I think we, we're trying to lay some background content about, you know, characteristics of a high-performing school district, have a community-coconstructed vision for student success. It has districts that, uh, articulate a coherent strategic plan or roadmap. It aligns its resources to high-leverage strategies. It identifies quantifiable indicators in all of those areas that if, if you implement them with fidelity, you know, that you can, you can anticipate and expect accelerated student outcomes. So, and, and it takes time to really get that done well. And so what you heard in this last section was, you know, a few initial priorities that we pulled out there, uh, because we're building it and flying it at the same time. And that's what we focused on this year, and then a pandemic hit. So I hear the very real questions about, um, you know, I want to hear about reopening and how are we marshaling and leveraging available resources to address student need right now and taking care of our educators? And those are all valid, important questions. It's not the presentation tonight, but it is what we're spending fourteen hours a day thinking, uh, about. Um, but knowing that there will be the impacts, um, in, in how we welcome back our students and, and the things that we can make available, uh, in the way of experiences and, and supports, uh, this summer and going, thinking about the coming school year. You're, you're going to hear some of that, uh, towards the end of this presentation. Um, but in thinking about our work this year, there was a few things that we did, we did want to make sure and accomplish, despite every, all the spinning plates. Uh, we, we wanted to make sure that we're following through on those initial set of, of system shift strategies and, you know, really extend them out, identify what are the other emerging ones that are becoming, uh, evident, uh, as areas of focus. Uh, we wanted, we needed, we felt like it was important to do the work. And again, these are, this, this is work that sometimes districts don't execute on. And so there isn't the follow-through one, but you have a graduate portrait. Uh, ideally, you're backward mapping that continuum all the way down to your youngest scholars. So then you can start applying some indicators to it, right? Well, and, and, and one of our directors brought it up earlier. If we have a twelfth grade walking across the stage graduate portrait, all those skills and dispositions, what does that look like at eighth grade? What does that look like at third grade? What does that look like ideally when students enter? Um, so that's part of the work, uh, that we've been doing. There's been some fantastic work by our early education team and group who have already gone through these exercises and identified, okay, for our four-year-olds, what does it begin to start to introduce compassion and empathy? Uh, how do we grow those skills besides foundational literacy and some other areas? Uh, and our educator essentials, right? This is, this is another perfect opportunity to bring in our professionals' voices. Uh, and thus why focus groups and really sort of continuing the, the, the kinds of dialogues that we were having when constructing the vision originally. How, how do we also think about those educator essentials so that any adult who's in the system, who plays, is a supportive adult towards student success, can I place myself on a continuum along those same skills and dispositions? It's not just students, it's also the adults have to be able to do that, especially the ones that are supporting the students, uh, to, to, to grow those skills. So there's a lot of engagement that, that has been happening the last number of months, uh, in thinking about those questions. And we wanted to make sure to center and prioritize Black and Native voices in all of that. So we want to make sure as we're transforming, reimagining the school district that, you know, to Ms. Anderson's point that we're, and Director DePass is earlier, that, that, that we're really sort of centering our students who prior, uh, you know, haven't been served in, in the way that we know that they have the potential. Um, and then as an end goal, as a deliverable for us, is we were hoping to close out the school year with a four-year stra- strategic plan. And you're going to start to hear sort of what some of those emerging elements are. And even though it's a bit of a preview and not quite ready for, for showtime and not camera-ready to be published, we wanted to begin to sort of preview those because they're the basis of how we're thinking about leveraging all of the different resources that we have available. So you're going to hear some of those, and we won't spend a lot of time on them, uh, tonight, because we'll keep revisiting them, but we do want to give you a sense of, um, what those are. So let me stop there for that section.
Thank you, superintendent. And, uh, to your point about student voice, wanted to highlight three, uh, uh, our three student interns, uh, Carmella, Lana, and Sage, who are working, uh, in my office to develop the strategic plan. So they, these students are helping navigate and ensure that we develop a strategic plan that is centered on our students, particularly our Black, Native, and, uh, and students of color. And, uh, these, uh, interns are also helping us with the long-range facilities plan, uh, in addition to our strategic plan. So really helping, uh, having, having students, uh, in our, in our table and at our conversations around the strategic plan has been really helpful. And as the superintendent, uh, uh, alluded to, uh, in year one, we, um, prioritize these five system shifts, which you see in, in dark blue. Emerging, uh, from our current work is two additional, uh, priority, uh, areas. Mindful inclusive practices to support the continuum of students with disabilities and flexible future-focused environments. In addition, uh, we have some emerging additional priorities, including an innovation strategy under system shift one, and implement, uh, an educator essentials implementation strategy, a graduate portrait implementation strategy, and some cross-ship strategies around socialization, strategic communications, building a culture of belonging to, uh, Ms. Anderson's point earlier, and being a data-driven culture. So here are some of the, uh, emerging graduate portrait strategies. Number one, we want to develop a graduate portrait development continuum and set up, a set of performance assessments to articulate PPS's expectation of student mastery at key transition points. We also want to prototype with Black and Native students and students with disabilities learning experiences that effectively support the development of this graduate portrait. And three, we want to build an organizational capacity for shared learning by developing a knowledge management system that captures and distributes effective strategies, tools to help students attain the prioritized portrait elements. In addition, uh, when we think about our educator essentials, some of the recommended strategies that are, uh, emerging are developing an educator essential continuum and developing a district-wide culture of adult learning and align organizational structures. We also, uh, are emerging, uh, the three emerging opportunities, uh, beyond year one priority. So we're, we're working right now to refine, uh, and to add and refine existing strategies to the, the priority shift areas as we extend to 2025, especially work that is foundational. We're also adding strategies that relate to all multiple shift areas, including, uh, cross, or what we're calling cross-ship strategies. And we're adding additional priority shift areas and strategies. We're also, uh, there's an emerging additional strategy under shift one, as I mentioned earlier, uh, which is to build an innovation practice so that all staff and students develop the capacity to use innovation processes and tools to address challenges in the system and have supportive structure. to use innovation processes and tools to address challenges in the system and have supportive structure in place to enable them to do so. Some of the shifts, cross shift strategies that are emerging around are around socializing our vision and our strategic plan. Really strengthening our capacity to leverage our collective action toward our vision through socialization strategies that ensures all stakeholders understand and it can make meaning of our vision and our strategic plan so that we can operate from a place of shared understanding. And number two, develop an interplan- a communication practice that collaborates with diverse stakeholders across the system, including students, and that focuses on showing the systems to itself. That focuses on showing the system to itself, using a variety of data and media to share stories of progress and support system wide learning. We're also wanting to build an organizational culture of belonging, intentionally developing relational trust and a sense of belonging to clear, transparent communication, consistent behaviors and cross system collaboration as a foundation for our collective ownership of our students' success and well-being. Lastly, we're looking to establish a system wide data driven culture. Some of the emerging new shift priorities and strategies um are, include the mindful inclusive practices that support the continuum of students with disabilities. We want to develop our system wide capacity for inclusion by integrating data driven analysis and instructional best practices with a particular focus on the intersectional needs of our Black and Native students with disabilities. So that every student can attain the graduate portrait and every adult can develop their capacity to be inclusive and responsible to, to diverse learners. And we also want to build a flexible future focused environment where we're developing a future ready facilities master plan, as I indicated earlier, that our interns are working on by integrating our learning from 2020's distance learning experiences, strategic foresight about our facility needs and our racial equity and social justice framework. So it, this fall, uh, we, just how we got here and, and there's a lot more how we got uh arrived to these strategies. But in short, we, we did, uh, we did survey to gather input on prioritization of graduate portrait and educator essentials. We did focus groups uh with students, central office staff, administrators and over 60 teachers of color. Uh, focused uh our efforts um really to learn from Black and Native students to identify graduate portraits and educator essentials prioritizations. And we also established an advisory committee uh, uh, established to recommend prioritization of emerging strategies. And so uh as a superintendent, uh, uh, we're in the home stretch uh to final, finalize our strategic plan, but wanted to give you a sense of, of what was emerging uh ahead of your conversations around the budgets. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown to walk us uh through how we're thinking about monitoring and measuring towards success.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, pleased to join you this evening. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, as you heard Jonathan and the superintendent begin to lay out uh the work around the strategic plan, uh, you do hear some beginning to flesh out what, where we're thinking around uh goals and performance assessment of the strategic plan as we move forward. So each of the strategies that have been outlined will have, um, you know, clear, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic time bound and equitable goals uh during the strategic planning period. Uh, those will be incremented out um quarterly uh and, and also have annual reporting cycles involved with them. The plan will have both uh leading and lagging uh measures. I mean, for example, we often talk about graduation rates, uh, but the graduation rate data lags. Uh, on the other hand, ninth grade uh performance, students who are, who are ready to enter ninth grade, uh, that's a leading indicator for graduation and, and we'll be looking at, at, at uh data like that. But um, we're also going to incorporate a lot of qualitative data uh as, as we're working through this plan as well. And um, again, we're going to use quarter- quarterly monitoring as well as we'll do an annual reporting on the outcomes to the board and to the community. Next slide, please.
Dr. Brown, when uh will those um metrics and SMART goals be set?
Well, there, there are a couple of things that, that need to happen here. Uh, you know, earlier it was brought up that, oh, well, the board goals were set pre pandemic, so we're going to have to re baseline some of that work. Um, and as we begin to flesh out the, the strategic plan, uh, the actionable components of the strategic plan this spring, we'll begin to assign uh to those, uh, some of those measurable goal uh targets that, that go there.
So, so this, this spring, there'll be the development of some SMART, some SMART goals or a comprehensive set for the strategic plan?
We'll begin to outline some of the SMART goals for this, align to the, the areas that we've talked about today. Uh, specifically around the system shift, graduate portrait. Some of those though will, will likely be process goals initially as we work through some of this, this uh material.
Hey, uh, real quick, have you done anything to date that actually you would consider to be like something that's data driven to support the strategic plan?
Yes, I, I actually, uh, one of the areas where I think we've done um some significant uh early work around this is really with our racial equity um partnership strategies and the work with our, our racial equity uh partners, uh, the partner organizations that are uh working with PPS. Uh, we've worked with them to begin to outline goals with them. Uh, we're in a collaborative uh data sharing uh relationship with them around that work moving forward. And uh, I think some of that data is already out on the web uh connected to uh those partnership strategies that, that have been outlined. That is, is the framework that, that we're using around this, and I think that's some of the leading, leading work that would help understand uh how, the direction that we're going to go with that. One of the interesting things about that is it, and if we could go to the next slide, it'll actually help with us a little bit. The, you know, as some of you have pointed out today, uh, there, there's some challenges and opportunities here around this. Uh, the way that uh we traditionally think about uh academic measurement, uh, you know, it, it's really not sufficient to, to be again to measure and describe what we're talking about in this plan. We need a more expansive way to look at things aside from just standardized test scores uh with this. Um, so we're, we're really thinking and, and working with our partners in this case to think about how, how we could uh work with them to, to not just look at um, you know, uh quantitative outcomes, but also qualitative outcomes for kids uh to elevate their stories and to, again, with our, our partners around this, uh, really work around the collective efficacy to, to move our students forward and, and to elevate the voices of communities of color in that process as we think through it. Um, so it, it's shifting some of the, you know, traditionally when we think about outcomes in, in education, oftentimes they're very school system centric, and this is beginning to shift that de-centering the system and beginning to talk about then how we move forward as a, as an organization to work with data in, in context of our community.
Do you mind sharing the name of at least one partner that you worked with?
Sure. Um, we've worked with SEI, um, which is, is one of the partners. Uh, Latino Network is another one that we work with. Um, and again, there, there are a cluster of partners that we have worked with over, over time. And, you know, we, one of the things that we, we heard earlier was that there's been uh, or a part of the plan involves a focus on data based uh work in, in the community, and we've been building capacity uh to do that as well. And so that work has been done in conjunction with my department as well as our racial equity and social justice department. But in, in collaboration with our community partners as we move forward through that.
Sure.
Hey, yeah, quick question. Russ, a few moments ago, you mentioned some, uh, I think you mentioned revisiting some of the base or some of the goals and potentially um re-baselining, I think was the word you used. And I'm just curious if you could say a little bit more about that. Um, while on the one hand, I see, I understand why you might want to revisit that, in particular in the context of this moment and having gaps in data collection, you know, that would traditionally help us inform whether or not we're, you know, moving towards some of those outcome targets. On the other hand, I worry about, you know, patterns of like changing the goalposts, like even if we saw, you know, if we see what we suspect um is happening and patterns we're seeing across the country in terms of um, you know, learning setbacks or learning loss. I'm not sure we would want to lower our expectations for where we want students to be. Instead, would we not want to accelerate our efforts and investments so that students would get to where we wanted them to be faster despite the setback? So could you just say a little bit more about the re-baselining that you?
Sure.
That you mentioned?
So, the, there are two goals that I think in particular are, are uh ones that lend us to um not necessarily having to change expectations to, to your point. So grade three and grade five are both based on student growth and accelerating student growth for uh students of color. Uh, and again, I, I really admire that our board was willing to uh establish uh goals that, that set a um, an expectation to accelerate uh reading and, and mathematics achievement for, for those students. Growth and then subsequently achievement. When I say re-baselining, um, really I'm talking about, well, where are we starting? Uh, in terms of growth, what, what's that going to look like? Uh, because we've had this intermediary, intermediary period, and I just don't think we can deny that. Now, if we're going to close gaps in achievement, we have to maintain that same growth target. It, it, that's unavoidable, but I think we have to acknowledge where we are. And right now, we don't know that. And so it's re-establishing where are we and what is that gap that has to be closed? And then what are we going to do to align to that to accelerate learning for those students? The other area that, you know, we've talked about before that, that I think bubbled up here was, well, our eighth grade goals are really sort of placeholders. And they're, they're connected to S, S back and they focus on reading and mathematics achievement solely. But that clearly does not cover the, the range of skills that we want to see uh tied to high school readiness or readiness to, to move through the secondary environment to, to fulfill that, that vision for the portrait of grad. And so when, as we're doing the, the middle school redesign, we're really leaning into, well, what would performance based assessments look like? What would uh project based assessments look like? That would help tap into some of those other dimensions of, of the student's experience that would let us know that students are progressing towards that. And again, that's work that has to be done in conjunction. And then realistically, we don't know where we're going to land uh in terms of S back outcomes at this point. Um, and so that's again, another place where I think we just need to have a new baseline to say, where are we post pandemic? And then establish the goals uh moving forward. I agree, moving the, the, the goalpost is not going to be helpful, but we have to know where we're starting and, and then to, to set again, an incremental set of goals moving forward from that. So again, um, and I think you heard uh the superintendent talk about this. You know, our, our early childhood team has really leaned into what, what does this look like holistically for our early learners? Um, and again, then carrying that forward into middle school, what, what does that look like developmentally in middle school? Uh, we're really again interested in that ladder of skills as, as kids move forward. Uh, we all know that, that, you know, if, if we're going to close or close opportunity gaps or provide opportunities, as, as you mentioned. Um, yeah, and I think of, of pragmatic opportunities, who, who gets to take IB, who gets to get into AP, who gets to do dual credit? Um, who gets to, to, to go through CTE pathway? Um, those, those, some of those opportunities are foreclosed if we don't close gaps earlier uh and have kids prepared to enter uh high school. So it's really looking through that entire developmental continuum and are students on track throughout that entire developmental continuum to be able to have those opportunities um to really fulfill that graduate portrait. And again, uh, as we're thinking about it, it's not just the graduation rate, but it's, it's that post-secondary readiness for our Black and Native students. Uh, you know, we, we look at, at graduation, I don't want to minimize the importance of graduation. We, we all know that graduation literally doubles a student's lifetime earning potential in and of itself. But we know that graduation is really the, the base, not the ceiling. Uh, and we really want to have an expectation that extends beyond that so that we know our students are um, again, ready to enter a post-secondary environment. And we want to honor again the diversity of ways that could, kids could do that. And so the way the goal was originally laid out, it included again IB participation, AP participation, C, uh, CTE and, and dual credit participation, the capacity to earn a bilingual certificate. And we're also looking at, well, what does it mean for a student to, to progress through in, in arts pathway in a way that would have them be prepared to be post-secondary ready? So again, we're trying to uh gather a diverse set of ways in which a student could show up uh and be prepared. And as you think about those uh areas in, in the curriculum or areas of the student experience that aren't measured by a standardized assessment, that's where we start thinking about, well, where does performance based assessment fit in? Where does a project based assessment fit in? And can we start thinking about maybe perhaps micro credentialing for kids as a way to, to convey that? Because then we can quantify the outcome and convey that to, to the public.
Dr. Brown?
Yeah.
What does micro credentialing mean?
It, it's giving kids credit for acquisition of a skill. So, you know, if we think about, um, it, it, this often happens in IT. Uh, IT folks will often pursue credentials in a sequence over time towards larger um endorsements for, for their work. So in a, in a IT CTE pathway, you could see kids acquiring skill sets with a demonstrable credential that they could carry forward and actually could help them towards employment at, at some point in time. Uh, I've seen that in a couple of other systems where they were, were working through that for their, their students. It was a helpful way for them to again acquire uh a credential that could be portable and move forward. And again, it moves past proficiency just by standardized assessments. Uh, certainly that's a good baseline. We want to know the kids have acquired reading, writing, mathematics, you know, skills. Uh, there are good fundamental skills that kids need to have, but, but we're certainly talking well beyond that in terms of expectations. And I think at this point, next slide, please, we're transitioning to talking about the budget, the things that we've all been waiting for.
Hey, um, real, real quick, I had a question, just put my hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't say it.
Yeah, um, I, I had a couple of questions. You were mentioning that uh we're going to be monitoring and measuring success of the, of the street strategic plan. And there was, you know, qualitative and quantitative ways that we were going to do that. What are the specific ways that we're going to come up with ways to figure out if we're, you know, succeeding with the strategic plan? I, I think you said that you're still developing those or you don't have those yet? Is that right?
I want to lean into one that I think is, is predictable, actually a couple, and, and they, they speak to something that we talked about today. And I'll back up a little first. There, we're a member of the Council of Great City Schools and Council of Great City Schools has been doing a lot of work around key performance indicators uh for operations as well as academics. So, you know, there's a lot of work that has been done on the types of things that could be used. I might narrow in on one um that, that is fairly common. Uh, it was part of uh our strategic plan in my prior system and something we communicated to the community. And I can't help but to think it's going to emerge here as well, given some of the things that are bubbling up in the strategic plan. Um, we talked about the importance of having a diverse workforce and a workforce that is more representative of the students uh that we serve. So looking at the representation of the, of the workforce, looking at recruitment is part of that. But it's also then, it, it's not just recruitment, but it's also the retention component. Uh, because one can do recruitment, but if you can't retain, then that, that, that's problematic as well. And so I fully expect that we'll be looking at some dimensions of recruitment and retention uh tied to the diversity of our workforce. Uh, and, and again, at all levels, not uh just, um, you know, sometimes that gets skewed if one's looking at just one part of the workforce, the other, but really looking across the entire workforce.
I think I was, I, I was kind of focused more, I guess, on students. Um, do we have like participation levels of MAP testing and C, C back testing? We?
Oh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Brad, that, that's actually, uh, e- those are the easy ones, yes. We, we uh frequently have participation rates for that. We will also know not just the participation rates, but we'll know the average performance of those students, we'll know the per- uh, what proportion of those students met growth targets. That is how we establish the third grade goal and that's how we establish the fifth grade goal as well. Um, that obviously is a little easier to do when we're in brick and mortar and, and then, you know, you have a, a more complete testing environment. And and then, you know, you have a more complete testing environment. You know, during the pandemic, that's this is a little bit of a hurdle right now. But in a traditional school setting. Administering those assessments on a regular basis and looking at the changes in student achievement and growth over time. Is actually one of the easier things to get at.
So, right, and we just, I think you just completed the MAP testing. Do you have those participation levels?
We're in the middle of, we're actually just wrapping up the MAP assessment. So I think it'd be premature for me to to say that. The numbers have floated at this point, they're they're around 70% even in the pandemic. Which is really quite high, given that it was a voluntary window for our students and faculty.
Go ahead, Claire.
Hi, Jonathan, I wonder if you wouldn't mind watching for the hands that go up if they as they come up? Because it's hard for me to do that and.
Happy to.
Thank you, appreciate that. Good evening, so I'll be sharing some.
I think Renee has a question.
Okay.
This is going back to some catching students up. Data is going to give $325 million for summer programs. Do we know anything about it? Like, how much will PPS get? Is anything, do we know anything else about the 325 million?
So I will be covering just in a little bit some of the funding that we're receiving this just even this past week, both at the federal and the state level. So I'm about to go through the additional funding that we have, but I'm not sure.
No, Claire, that you would have that covered. Thank you.
Great, here we go. So I'm going to give you a high level budget overview for next year. Now, this isn't the night where we're going to give you everything, because that's really coming out in the proposed budget. But we are, we have some big buckets identified and we're we're not down to the individual school level yet. But that will be coming in the in in April. It's been an exciting week in the school finance world. It doesn't, we never have money that just shows up from the feds and the state in the same week that was, you know, that we had no idea was. Going to be so large and so supportive of our learning acceleration out of a pandemic. So but we had, federal funding is now signed and into law, so we know that it's coming. And I'll share a little bit more about that in a minute. And but at the same time, the state made an announcement and that one is still in the proposal stage. So we'll have to watch the as the legislature goes through on their budget. And I would like to go to, let's see, we're on the American Rescue Plan. That is the federal funding and that's come through. We have 1.1 billion in for Oregon, just for Oregon. Total elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. And then we that equates to about $1,843.76 for each student. So that's a lot of funds coming into the state.
That 76 cents is really key. Claire, is the that state funding?
That's the next slide, if you just give me just a second to finish the federal. And so on the, that's all right. On the federal level, then, I want to highlight that 20% of it, a minimum of it, will go towards learning recovery. And I know there's been a lot of conversation, questions about what are we doing about the pandemic? What I can tell you is right now, we're working so hard on getting ready for hybrid and opening schools. That it, we are in beginning conversations about these funds, but we still need more time to work through how we're going to utilize them. We have some, you know, beginning strategies that we started with, but that we had identified other funds towards it. But now that the funding has grown, we will need to continue to to work in those areas. So on the next slide, then, on the state level. The governor and legislative leaders announced on Monday that we will have $250 million for summer learning. And childcare for our kids. In the governor's press release, it described an investment to help students and children learn, thrive and and have fun this summer. I think everyone's anticipating being outside and having a chance to socialize more and be be with their peers. The grants can be used by school districts and community partner organizations. The summer learning and childcare package will create grants for enrichment activities, academic support, childcare and early learning programs. And investments will be made equitably for Oregon's black, indigenous, tribal, Latino, Latinx, Latina, Pacific Islander and children of color. And those are who we have the most disproportionate impact on the last year's challenges. And so we want to make sure that we're providing a rigorous slate of activities for them this summer. As as the warm weather comes and the pandemic cases go, the COVID cases go down. It still needs to go through the legislative process and it will be incorporated in incorporated into their final budget for the 2123 biennium. And we will be incorporating this into our budget as well. But still, it's early for us to have in both the federal and the state. There's still rules being written and needing clear understanding. Like, for instance, when we talk about at the Oregon is getting so much money, the 1.1 billion, some of that stays at the Oregon Department of Ed level. Before, but 90% of it comes out to the states and to the districts. So I just want to just highlight that we have a lot of funding that was identified this week. And we are thrilled to be able to utilize that towards our strategic plan, the emerging components especially.
I have a question about this. I have a question about the the summer piece and it's. And what I'm curious about is when we know where our students are at and whether, as we know, for some students, CDL comprehensive distance learning has been a great experience and others, not so much. So would our summer activities be matched to the students? Who we know had some learning losses or also we had a significant enrollment drop of seeking to return those students to our schools? And then how would the equity lens be applied?
So like I said, we got this information on Monday and we've been focused on hybrid learning and you're asking excellent questions, Julia. And so we just need a little bit of time to read through what the intent is of each of the funds. And so I'm just, I'm giving you the amount of information we've received to date. And it is certainly, you know, when we look at our vision and what we want to accomplish for our graduate portrait. And just thinking about how do we get all of our kids there and really focusing on our black and native students? And so it is, it takes a team for us to prioritize investments for our strategic plan. And we are so focused on opening schools with a 10 day notice that we just haven't had time to talk about this yet. And but it just know that it will be next on our list.
Sarah?
Yeah. Yeah, quick, quick related question, not exactly the same one that was just asked, but what? When I hear you say, we're going to figure out how to align these new funds with our strategic plan. My head went to thinking about the next budget year rather than money that we want to spend immediately. And so I'm I'm operating under the assumption that these, I mean, I know there's turnaround time, et cetera. But we've sort of have, I think we've had a pretty good sense of what some of the needs are. And I can't imagine that you all don't have a shortlist of of things, strategies in your back pocket that you, you know, have wanted to fund once the resources became available. Are there plans, I just want to be clear in my own head about using some of these federal resources and or the new state resources as soon as humanly possible? Like even this spring and into the summer to to address some of both the academic and and student mental health and well-being? Needs that have emerged in the last year or so?
So there is a whole learning recovery and acceleration component in later on in the slide deck that kind of goes into those priorities. But it comes from definitely all across the organization in in terms of where our aligning those priorities. It just because of the, we have, we're coming out of a pandemic, doesn't mean that we don't still strive for that graduate portrait. It just means we might need additional strategies to get there, right? And so certainly, it is utilizing, you know, some of those thinking. And I'll, in a minute, I'll show you what we've put into place already and that we'll continue to add to as we. Well, you know, take all the pots of money and they're kind of distinguished for specific purposes and we need to align that. We haven't had that chance to do that yet. But certainly, you can see in this $250 million at the state level, that one's for the summer. It's intended to be used this summer. That's going to be an enormous increase in activities for our students in terms of academic supports. And they talked about fun, kids having fun this summer, right? So it's really, and it's centered around wellness, mental health, well-being. You know, it is, all of us have been in the house for a long time, right? And the wonderful thing about Oregon summers is that being outside is a wonderful experience. And it makes it safer in a pandemic and we have lots of opportunities now to offer supports for our children.
If I can chime in here, even though it said a lot of words in the slide, because I think what the question that Sarah and others have asked is, you know, how will we leverage and exploit these resources unexpectedly right now to make sure and support students in whatever area? So there's no shortage of ideas on our part, but you're going to hear a preview of, well, what can we start doing in the immediate? Is it Saturday tutoring sessions? What would it look like, you know, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag. But in the same way, staff produced the menu of student and family supports during the course of this pandemic? What's it going to look like if we advertise and publish a very robust summer programming enrichment? That includes academic supports in the morning, enrichment with community partners in the afternoon in parks. Work with our partners, field trips, experiential, so they get the socialization and extended learning opportunities. What does it look like to really blow out our concepts of arts academies? Not a lot of our students weren't able to get arts instruction during this pandemic. We're already thinking about, what if we offer a double session of virtual scholars and credit earning opportunities for our students? Many of whom, as we're tracking them, are going to need those opportunities to make up credits or for others to get ahead of some of those who want. So there there's a whole litany of sort of activities that we're sort of analyzing a little bit of cost benefit and work we can leverage. And braid funding and work with our partners to really put out something expansive so that families can say to themselves, wow, PPS. It's really sort of leveraging this opportunity to to make up for some some time and also re-engage. Many of our students at all grade levels already in mind for us are a lot of not just summer programming sessions, but also. Jump starts at the beginning of the traditional school year so that, remember, some of our students have never been to kindergarten. Some of our students, some of our parents are going to enter them as a kindergarten or maybe first grade. But we still want, you know, a week or two ahead of time to orient them to to the school setting and environment in a way that maybe they didn't have an opportunity to this school year. So that's just a little teaser of some of the things that are going through our head right now that we want to materialize. It's just right now, we're staff capacity is completely focused right now on reopening schools. But those are some of the ways that that we anticipate taking advantage of all of those state and federal monies designated in different areas. But I think we intend to do this well and we intend to sort of be an exemplar for for how we're going to use those resources.
So we'll continue to align our budget resources with our, we shared the staffing guiding principles last month with both the board and the CBRC. And our initial allocation and some targeted investments in our school staffing. And I'll go on to the next slide. We talked about last month as well about the timing and just understanding that our, just like last year, we have a lot of moving funds coming and going. And so we know that we will be able to add the federal funding, because it's very specific and it's laid out in time for the proposed budget. But the state 250 million, we're still learning what what all that means, but we hope to have that certainly. And then the actual funding level for all of our general fund, the state school fund, the SIA Student Investment Act and the high school success funding. Making sure that we have all those components in from based on what the legislature finally adopts for us. So we, by the, by the end of May, whatever the legislature decides, we'll get into the approved budget and then the adopted budget. So just know that it's going to still be a budget that is developed over the next couple of months, because the funding continues to evolve. But we'll keep you apprised of of what comes as as it comes and what, how we'll incorporate that into the work. So we'll be working both with the board and the CBRC on that. And if you would go on to the next slide, then we just, with the COVID relief funding here, this was prepared prepared before. So you're going to find some of these slides, that's why I started with the two new sources of funding that came out this week. We sent this presentation out on Monday, so some of these slides were prepared before the all the announcements had been made. And where we had clear guidance of what was coming. So but know that we talked about, we have some one-time funding coming through and that we will be. You know, making sure that students and family have access, you know, in this terms of this year. This is how we spent those COVID relief monies. And we did give you guys more of a detailed account of that earlier this prior month. I'm going to go on to the next slide and talk about 2122 commitments. And we have, again, these were made, this slide was made before, you know, the rest of these slides were made prior to the announcements. But just prior to the additional funds that came through. We are continuing our 2021 investments from the SIA. Whether even whether they were in general fund or in SIA, they're getting, they're continuing forward in that strategic plan investments. And we will have, we're really prioritizing stabilizing the staffing at schools. We allocated staffing to schools at the higher enrollment pre-pandemic levels so that we can avoid moving teachers around. When we believe that our students will be coming back to us. The equity formula has been kept at 8%. However, there are more schools that are eligible for the funding, so it has been stretched across more schools. Now, this doesn't mean that this has to stop here, because now we have additional funding to it that we'll be able to utilize in in those kinds of supports. The, we've increased investments in our pathways. We've enhanced services in for emergent bilinguals and students on IEPs and targeting our BIPOC students. So just know that these are continuing. We've added 30 FTE for learning acceleration. Now, again, that is prior to this new announcement, so we will be expanding those. And we invested about 13.2 million in learning acceleration. Now, here's a comparison on the next slide, showing a graph of our strategic investment. You can see last year that we invested 21 million in our five system shifts. And you can see that blue is general fund and green is our SIA funds. And then in this 2122, again, before this, this graph was created before we received the last two sources of funds. You can see that we are going up in that we have 6 million in general fund, 29 million in SIA funds. The dark purple is SR1 funding at 2.5 million and the lavender is SR2 funding at 16 million. So so our strategic investments have. So, um, so our strategic investments have, um, increased significantly in this next year. If you go to the next slide, please, you can see, um, how much we have invested in, um, 21, 22 totaling 54 million by the five system shifts. And, um, we have about a million in the Connected and Transformative School District. We have eight million in the Racial Equity Aligned Systems Structures and Culture. We have a million in the Cultivating System Wide Learning and a Diverse Workforce. And we have 32 million in Transformative Curriculum and Pedagogy. And we have 12 million in the Culture of Physical and Emotional Safety. So those are the investments, um, that we have, um, uh, set up for 21, 22. And we'll have a much more detailed, um, uh, description and, um, uh, what is involved in each one of those, um, line items as we develop our budget and create, um, a higher understanding and, you know, better understanding of all those investments. Some of those are the continued from last year and some of them are new, um, and additional investments. If you would go on to, if you go on to the next slide, we have, um, this is a list of $19 million that has been put into, um, learning acceleration, um, in our system shifts and including, um, through this, um, some of the ideas that you were asking for earlier. Again, the dollar amount is prior to the new money being announced. But Saturday school, summer programming, um, looking at, uh, online evening scholars, summer scholars, um, wraparound services and professional development. So those are our initial, um, uh, investments that we were, um, investing in, in our learning acceleration of the district.
What are scholars? Sorry, the summer scholars, virtual scholars, is that, can you just briefly just say what that means?
Can I get, um, Craig Quayar, um, to talk about, these are different programs that we have?
Yeah, you can be super brief. I'm just trying to.
Okay. Absolutely. Um, so our evening scholars program is actually a program that's going to be housed in each of our comprehensives. It's an online, it's an online platform that gives students access, um, to be able to take credit recovery or credit accelerated courses. Uh, virtual scholars is kind of the same platform as well. It's a program, um, that currently, um, um, services, uh, close to about a thousand students. It's an all online, um, program, um, where, um, students are enrolled and they are engaged with online, um, instructors, um, to, um, be able for, for course completion and graduation, which is an all online platform. And our summer scholars program, um, is exactly kind of like a blend of the both, except it's a summer program that's aimed, um, either at credit recovery or, or credit acceleration, um, for our students. So it's, in a nutshell, it's, it's our virtual platform that is offered in a myriad of ways, um, that will give students, uh, multiple opportunities and platforms to be able to accelerate.
So I have a question just based on some other, um, presentations we had earlier this year. So we have a, not unlike other districts, a significant enrollment drop. And not just in kindergarten, first grade, a pretty significant amount from second to eighth grade. And then we saw some, um, attendance data the other night and disaggregated, um, you can see, um, some real gaps, um, across our, uh, the student body. Um, and I'm curious whether any of our resources or we're thinking about, um, how we're bringing those students back in that have either left the district, um, or, um, you know, because of lack of engagement or for what, for whatever reason, um, have, um, are not attending on a regular basis. So we know when students don't attend, um, what impact that has on, on learning. So when I look through all these, I'm trying to see sort of where we're trying to re, not just accelerate, but for those students who have disengaged or left PPS. So how we bring them back, um, it, into our, into our schools and reengage them and then accelerate them through some of these programs.
That's a really good question and, and I'll touch on, on one piece of it. Um, because we have, we, we have had a numerous amount of wraparound support to each of our buildings through some of our previous investments. Um, we have had dedicated personnel, uh, either onsite or also part of our providers that have been providing, um, um, support to our schools that have actually been doing concentrated reach out efforts in, in trying to reengage our students, um, through a myriad of different ways. Um, one of the targeted approaches that we did highlight, um, part of learning acceleration is, you know, how are we re-engaging some of our disengaged students? Um, that could be students that have disengaged and we've seen some attendance gaps. Um, that can also be a, a, um, a full out campaign in terms of how we're reaching out to families to get them to come back to PPS. Um, a- again, I know it's still very early, Director Bryn Edwards, but, um, but we are pretty confident that, you know, once we start to shift and, and we get back into the building and, and families know that it's a, it's a safe learning environment, um, that, that we are hopeful that we are going to start seeing our students, um, actually start coming back, um, into our system. Um, but we do have, um, we do have a team, um, and not just one team, but we, we actually have a, a, a number of folks, um, again, from our, from our partners to, to in-house staff and even through the Office of Student Support Services, uh, a, a dedicated attendance team that is just really, you know, concentrated on, on that purpose if you just.
Can I ask about, um, the scholars programs? Um, so historically those have been pretty high demand, um, and, and relatively limited. So I, I'm assuming that the demand for these programs is going to be pretty dramatically increased. Um, are we anticipating how, how much we're going to have to scale up those programs to meet the need?
That's a very good question, Director Moore. Um, we do have a learning acceleration team, um, that is, um, that is devising these plans, but it's also evolving as well based off of what, um, Claire just mentioned, because as we continue to learn more about what our, um, fiscal realities are, um, these plans continue to have, these, these plans have to evolve. Um, but we, we do have a team specifically for our virtual and the evening scholars, um, that was comprised of, of our, our, um, our folks that are on MPG, the high school team, even some principals as well. Um, but you are, you are absolutely right. Um, one of the ideas is to, um, absolutely expand, um, um, those programs, um, so we are able to reach, um, um, more students. And, and so you, you, you are right that, that is, that is part of the learning acceleration plan.
Um, also, uh, in, in normal times, um, I believe this is still the case, um, in normal times, some of, at least some of these programs have fees attached, um, for anyone, anyone, anyone who doesn't qualify for free reduced lunch. Um, are we, with the new monies we're getting, are we going to be able to waive any fees attached to especially credit recovery?
You know, we haven't gotten that far, um, into the conversation, but it, um, you know, uh, especially our, um, low income students, um, it certainly, um, seems like the right thing to do. So.
I, I love this conversation. I, um, I had a kid that really wanted to do virtual scholars because his girlfriend was doing just, elected to do, um, virtual scholars. And it does come with a cost, uh, per class. So I, I hope the district can come up with a way of a decision-making to address that fact that the demand will be quite a bit higher than the supply.
Sure.
I, I'll, I'll take it a step further and say, I would like to see the fees waived in perpetuity, um, in particular for credit recovery programs. Um, it is, I, I mean, that the bar for, um, qualifying for free and reduced lunch is so low that an enormous percentage of families that are just above the poverty level, um, are, are priced out. Um, it, it's the, the, the cost is enormous barrier for a lot of families. And, and I would hope that with the new money coming in, at the very least for this year, um, I, I would hope that we would be able to waive any fees.
Especially.
And then think about making it permanent.
Especially if students can't retake a class if they got an F at their school.
And, and we should look all across, you know, all across our offerings just to raise the bar a little bit higher, uh, Director Moore. Because, um, we, we don't want to be like, um, creating barriers for, for low income people to get educated.
I, I.
I think that we're doing that, but that, that we should remove all barriers to educating specifically people, low income folks.
Yeah, I, I support the, the, you know, the looking at fees for, for, um, I, I think specifically summer school. Uh, I, I've seen that be used as a way to, um, you sort of knock off the, the less, uh, you sort of fun classes. Um, you know, get, get your, get your harder, uh, or, you know, subjects that certain students struggle in, um, that have the, the financial means to take that course. Cause it is a shorter, uh, time they can take it then, um, and not have to worry about it. It's a convenience thing for some students. I think removing the, you know, the price barrier, uh, will be pretty, you know, beneficial, uh, especially for, for the, the students that are lower income, but not, um, you know, they don't meet the mark for, for free and reduced lunch.
Yes, and I'm, I was just going to jump in super, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was going to say super quickly, and I think I'm using up more than my fair share of the airtime. So this will be the last thing I say. Um, I think in the same vein, I was surprised not to see some version of high dosage tutoring on that list. I know it's, again, it's like the third time I've said it this, this evening. I'm guessing maybe it will be on the next list that comes out given the avalanche of funding that's coming through and the evidence base to support, um, that kind of intervention. And I think that if we are able to neutralize what can be a really expensive intervention that so many families have had access to opportunity to over the course of the past year and so many others have not, if we can offer that to all students, almost in a, an opt-out, like studies actually show if you offer it to all students and make it opt-out rather than opt-in, that it increases participation among the students who, um, you know, we ideally want to be able to offer the support to. It reduces the stigma associated with it. And, um, I just think it would be a real mistake if PPS didn't come out with an incredibly strong tutoring program as soon as possible.
Oh, and, and, and Sarah, thank you for surfacing that. And, and again, what we were just sharing is very preliminary and it's, um, it doesn't even really capture, um, it, it, it doesn't capture, um, the full learning acceleration plan in totality. Tutorials is absolutely one of the things that's on the forefront, um, in terms of how we're exploring that, because tutorials, we know are going to look very different for what that looks like in, in our, in our primary grades and what it does in our secondary grades. And that's where we're really leaning in to where it's going to really potentially be a site-by-site plan, um, that's going to be really catered to the school itself. But that's absolutely part of the conversation and I really appreciate you, um, surfacing that.
Before I turn it over to Director Bailey, I do want to time check. It is 9:15. Uh, today was, you know, we wanted to give you a, 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 a high level overview of where we are with our strategic plan uh, and how we got to this place. And I, as you heard from, uh, Claire Hertz, um, wanted to share with you at a high level of summary and early, uh, early indication of some of the, the, the numbers that are coming out. So, uh, we know that we're going to be in community for the next few months extensively, um, around these conversations and these ideas. And so, uh, I do want to just do a time check and, 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 and hopefully we can wrap up soon, uh, facilitating here, um, and we all have lived busy lives. But Director Bailey, you want to wrap this up with the last comment?
Um, one, there's been, been great discussion. Two, it's really exciting, um, the response from the federal government and from the state to bring in a whole big pot of money to do good things for the kids who need it most. Um, my, my question, and I don't, uh, I'll take my answer offline. Uh, it's just something to think about, that I'm thinking about is, one, this is a whole lot of new services and over the summer, um, a lot of planning involved, both to what are we going to do this money and then how to deploy it. And given our recent discussion, uh, about staff have been going 200 miles an hour for a year now. Um, what's our capacity? Um, and do we need more temporarily central office staff, uh, to really pull, pull this off uh, and execute it in the way that our kids need us to?
I'll offer a quick response, uh, Director Bailey, just so we don't leave you hanging without wondering. Uh, it does take extra capacity and I've never seen a district do extended learning well without a team thinking about that year round, but especially ramping up in the summer. So Monday I have final interviews with hopefully what will be a newly appointed director of learning and acceleration and extended learning, who will bring together our different departments and start to build out, uh, a concept that, that we're getting excited about. And, you know, you can imagine how creative it can be when you think about summer re-engagement, not just for students, but also for our educators. You know, what, what if, what if we gave them the opportunity to share a hobby and interest, uh, and elective this course this summer? You know, uh, where, where they could get excited again, uh, as well. Um, and then there's another, there, there are a number of other areas we, I haven't even had a chance to talk to the team about. There are other federal monies I want to see if we can tap. So there's going to be another infusion of AmeriCorps money, for instance. So having been a person who exploited, exploited that resource before, what would it look like if a few hundred college students were tutoring the students that Sarah is talking about? Could really benefit from that kind of attention. Hopefully somebody who could even serve as a role model, uh, while they're doing that. So we have our partnerships, we have providers, we have some local resources we can leverage. But I think we can be really creative about how we take on the summer and the next school year to leverage, you know, sort of a, a, a once in a, a long time, you know, infusion into public ed.
Thank you, Superintendent Garra. I'm going to turn it over to Chair Lowry, uh, to close this out.
I know that this is just the beginning of a longer conversation that we'll be having, but I just want to share my appreciation first for the CBRC members. Um, I know that it's a lot of work that you engage in and, um, your question asking and the deep diligence you do on this work is really, really beneficial for us as a board as we, um, make these decisions, the final decisions about the budget. And I also want to thank our staff. I, um, this crisis of, um, the pandemic has really shown to me the innovative, uh, nature and creativity of our staff. And so, once again, um, you know, it's, it's a great problem. I think they, uh, as Taylor Swift would say, it's champagne problems to have all this money just falling at you from the government. Um, but I know that it still is a lot of work, Claire, um, to be putting this all together. So thank you for, you know, taking that news on Monday and, and bringing us something to begin, again, this conversation. So we are going to go ahead and adjourn tonight. Um, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on March 30th, following spring break. Um, and I know that we will continue to meet with CBRC, that CBRC will continue to meet and, um, together we'll continue on the journey of this budget process. Thank you everyone for your time tonight.